Today is Monday, April 7th. The time is 6:40 PM. The council has a regularly scheduled meeting set to take place in 20 minutes. Before we do that, we have our public speak-out portion of this meeting. We have four speakers who have registered to speak this evening. They'll each be given three minutes to address us. The first speaker who's registered, her name is Everlyn Lavendar. Is Everlyn here? Okay, calling again for Everlyn Lavendar. In person or remote, I do not see Everlyn here. We'll go back at the end to see if Everlyn is available. Next registered speaker is Stephen Howard. Mr. Howard, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chair, as the former chair of the Digital Equity Working Group back in 2023, which was established by former President Letterman, he passed on the mantle to Officer Delgado, Councilor Delgado. And he basically did a pretty good job getting the report together and submitted to the mayor's office. On when the McKnight Neighborhood Council, I'm not speaking on behalf of McKnight Neighborhood Council. I'm speaking as a resident. When the McKnight Neighborhood Council meets tomorrow, one of the things that they'll be doing is talking about the MBI, Massachusetts Broadband Institute. So that speaker will be giving us an update as to what's available because some people don't know that back in 2000, beginning in 2008 and approved in 2009 under the leadership of President Obama, something like $65 billion, that's what it'd be, $65 billion dollars for broadband digital equity allocation was made nationwide back, I believe, was in 2022. President Biden then doubled down on that with another $65 billion dollars in allocations for broadband digital equity. And I believe it was June of last year, 2024, that another 40, I think it was $45 or $47 billion dollars was allocated to continue that program. It's ironic that with this new administration, at least close to $40 billion of those on-top sources, from what I'm reading, will be redirected to, to the man who is doing a lot of cutbacks in the federal government, specifically Elon Musk, oops, with his space program. And the reason, the justification that's been given is that instead of laying down all of that broadband cable and so forth, it would be more feasible, according to the administration, to have SpaceX do all that internet access. So hopefully, the report, which I understand has been placed on the mayor's desk, has been approved and that it's been submitted to MBI because you're looking at between $100,000 to $1 million dollars, which will be available for the city of Springfield. Thank you, Mr. President. My time is run out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Howard. Our next registered speaker is Karen Lee. Ms. Lee, good evening.
Hello. I have my activist hat on tonight. This is Karen Lee, 18 Lawn Street in Springfield. I'm here to talk about what's next for the Springfield Regional Justice Center. And Counselor Allen invited the, I'm sorry, let me back up. That's going to take place on April 30th, right here in these chambers at 6:00 PM. At the request of Counselor Allen, the Division of Assets Management and Maintenance, or the DCAM Office, the division is coming back to Springfield to speak about and give a presentation on where we are with building the new courthouse. Hopefully, we'll get some answers on the process and how that worked out. In the meantime, I think what's really important to understand is how important this is to the city of Springfield. At first, the process was a public ownership of the courthouse. Now, we want to build it on private land. And that's what the vote was a couple of months ago. They're going to build the new courthouse on private land instead of public land. And here's why that's a problem. In 1871, the first courthouse was built in Court Square. That's where the housing and juvenile courts are. That cost about $300,000 or $3 million in today's money. A hundred years later, the Roderick Ireland Courthouse was built, and that cost $17 million to build. In 2010, the federal courthouse was built, and that cost $57 million. The Mass Mutual Center, or the Springfield Civic Center, was demolished and rebuilt on the same footprint for $71 million. In 2022, they tell us that it would cost $200 million dollars to replace the courthouse in Court Square, demolish it, and rebuild it, $200,000, $200 million. A year later, in 2023, when the DCAM Office put out proposals to build the courthouse on public land or purchase the public land to build a new courthouse, it rose to $400 million, which all kind of seems in alignment of the costs as they gradually go up. Now, what we're being told is it's going to cost $640 million to build a new courthouse on private land. And we're not even going to own it. So at the end of 50 years or 40 years, we're going to have to leave wherever that private land is. We're going to have to leave the courthouse because we don't own the land or the property. And then what happens in 50 years? We're going to have to find another piece of land because we've left, lost our option of the land in Springfield on the courthouse where it is now. And we have no option, and that could cost us $3 billion in 50 years. This is a very bad idea, and Springfield needs a champion right here in this room to talk, to understand that we need to own our stuff. And I'm hoping you're going to be the champions. You're our elected officials, and we need you to represent Springfield and the residents on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Appreciate you. Thank you very much. Our next and final speaker is Jay Latore. Mr. Latore.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors. Juan Latore III, 122 Forest Hills Road here in Springfield. Councilors, I'm before you tonight because you've got an interesting set of agenda items. That doesn't happen ever. You have the opportunity to reappoint all three commissioners to the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. Why I say that's interesting is that these commissioners are supposed to be reappointed on staggered schedules one year apart. But due to an issue, two of the terms have expired already. So you're going to have the opportunity to reappoint all three tonight. And I think, Mr. President, that gives you, as councilors, the opportunity to ask some questions about the Springfield Water and Sewer Department and to advocate for our residents that are really struggling with the cost of everything these days. Had a lot of conversations about Eversource and Comcast and other utilities. But remember that the Water and Sewer Department is also raising the rates at the tune of about 7% annually. And they've been pretty transparent that they're going to continue to do it. I put together a couple of proposals that I'd asked that the council consider and hopefully ask the commissioners tonight. The first one is, the Water and Sewer Commission do have a customer assistance program that's similar to what the city has, that helps to support seniors, veterans, those that are dealing with low income. But their requirement is that you have to be already an applicant and considered for low-income heating assistance. And so that's certainly important, but what it means is that only a smaller section of the population can apply for that discount from Water and Sewer. And I think that could be expanded. I think that should be asked. Secondly, their discount program for seniors starts at age 68. A lot of our programs, including what you call Section 41(c), starts at age 65. And I think that's something that they should be able to speak to. Additionally, when it comes to supporting veterans, a lot of the programs that the city offers for discounts allow for a disability rating of anywhere from 10% and above. But the Water and Sewer Commission require that veterans have a disability rating of 80% and above, which makes it a little more restrictive to the amount of veterans that could apply for a discount. Last thing I want to explain is their abatement policy. As a homeowner, you can only apply for an abatement one time in your life. And so imagine a scenario where you go away for a weekend, you have a leaky toilet, you don't know about it, you're not checking your email. You come back Monday morning, you've got an extra $250 in your bill. You've got to decide whether or not to seek that abatement or wait because 10 years from now, you may have a broken pipe in your lawn, and that's going to cost $850. So I think that's very restrictive, and I think the Water and Sewer Commission should be a little more flexible, maybe an abatement once every five years. And so I hope you'll ask these questions to the commissioners tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latore. That'll conclude our public speak-out for this evening. Council will stand in recess for nine minutes until our regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00. Thank you.
All right, let's go. Okay, good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, April 7th. Time is 7:01 PM. We have a regularly scheduled meeting of the Springfield City Council. It's a call to order. Thank you all for joining us. Our city clerk has a medical appointment this evening, so we're joined by her assistant, Camille. Thank you, Camille, for subbing in. We're going to start by asking Camille to call the roll. You have to put your microphone on right there. And you should probably bring it up on the podium for you, Camille, if you're going to stand. Yeah. Right there. When you turn that on, you can...
Okay. Counselor Curran, absent Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present Counselor Govan, absent Counselor...
Present. I'm present.
Present Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Present Counselor Davila.
Present.
Present Counselor Brown. Present Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Whitfield. Absent Counselor Delgado.
Present.
Present Counselor Santanello.
Present.
Present Counselor Click Bruce.
Present.
Present Counselor Perez. Counselor Perez, absent Counselor Fenton.
Present. Will the council and our guests please rise for a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can we please... Well, we'll start with any reports of committee this evening. Do we have any reports of committee? Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maintenance and Development met Joint Committee with Economic Development chaired by Counselor Curran. We met to go over ever-source issues and getting different information as far as the different projects that they're going to do. It was a good meeting. They are willing, what they said as far as like what I asked and the council people present asks is for them to send information a lot further ahead, also detailing any projects that they're going to do in the city of Springfield. So they will send a report in a timely manner. So not only the counselors will be able to review it, but the actual, the community themselves, we're looking to probably post that on Facebook so they can review it, any issues, any concerns of any projects. They'll have enough time and will have enough time to work that out. But we will, we will get an actual report. We also are looking to do an audit. I talked to a few city people and they pretty much during the meeting said we should, Chris, you know, Chris, pretty much talking with Chris, he said that it would be a good idea to probably do it a little later. I know Counselor Dabilla, he does want to, he's looking for the body to do it a little bit sooner. We still haven't kind of came to that type when we're going to do the audit, but we are going to do an audit. Other than that, it was a constructive meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Environmental and Sustainability Committee had, and the Eco-Dev Committee had a combined meeting on March 19th. Counselor Curran and Counselor Delgado and Counselor Whitfield were in attendance, as well as some community members, Betty Johnson, Betsy Johnson, Vern MacArthur, Stephen Howard, Emily Kowano, and Dave O'Leary. Fred Rose from the Wellspring Harvest Greenhouse shared a PowerPoint. And what they're looking to do is possibly create some sort of overlay district to help their farm, which is a greenhouse in Indian Orchard that was built a few years ago. It's a co-op. It's a not, it's not a nonprofit. It's a business, and it's worker-owned. So we had a tour at the greenhouse, I believe it was last week, and we're going to be having a follow-up meeting, I believe it's next week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. Finance Committee met today at 5:30. There were six kind of normal finance committee kind of items. We approved, there was a motion from Counselor Walsh, and the whole committee voted on five of those items affirmatively. The sixth item, which has to do with paving, et cetera, was not voted, was not included. Counselor Walsh wanted Mr. Signoli to share more information at the, at the general meeting about that. So five of the six were approved, and we just want more discussion on the sixth. The other item that was on the agenda was, the seventh item was about the federal adjustment on Springfield spending, things we all heard about last week and were concerned about. And Kathy Bono and Steve Lonergan and all the people that were in the Finance Committee meeting attended that as well. We had a lot of questions, a lot of active questions about the impact of those changes from federal government. And the long story of, the short, long and short of it is that it looks like we'll be able to still continue with the projects. The Springfield people that are involved in the projects that that money would affect are, have been told by DESI, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, to continue going forward with, with doing the work that that money was paying for. So as bad as it sounded last week, it sounds better now. Of course, we're in a world now where things can change on a dime, but we're going forward, doing those projects, expecting to get a reimbursement around April 20th. And Kathy Bono gave a good update on it. So I guess that's, you know, it's not really on the agenda to discuss that anymore, but we have some good notes on it if anybody asks any question on it. So that's the Finance Committee report for today. The people in attendance were Counselor Walsh and Delgado and myself from the Finance Committee, and Counselor Govan, Counselor Click Bruce, Counselor Davila, and Counselor Whitfield. And it was, for someone who is always challenged by managing the people who are raising their hand on the screen, kudos to Counselor Davila and people for keeping me apprised of it. But we must have had, it was a very active meeting. There must have been 25 questions that came from TV land. So appreciate everybody's concern about the budget, and I think we're in better shape than it sounded last week. Let's hope it stays that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Will the clerk please recognize the counselor in seat number eight? Counselor Whitfield?
Present. Sorry about that. Present.
Thank you. Counselor Walsh, you have a committee report? You are muted, Counselor Walsh.
Thank you. I just have a point of information on the Finance Committee report. As a courtesy to all the members of the city council, I thought we should have a further discussion of paving, which impacts all of us and all our districts. So I was very happy to have that item moved forward without a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Any other committee reports this evening? Counselor Click Bruce?
Thank you, Counselor President. On last Thursday, on April 3rd, we had a public safety meeting, and in attendance was my colleagues, Counselor Davila, Counselor Allen, and Counselor Whitfield. And we just got updates from the Fire and Police Departments and any concerns that they may have moving forward, going into the summer months. We touched upon, you know, upticks and dirt bikes, also some shootings that have been occurring in our city and the crime, and trying to be proactive. We did have a press conference with the mayor and Commissioner of Police Department to, to address some of these issues. And I plan on bringing forth a dirt bike ordinance, or reintroducing it, excuse me, to our former colleague, State Senator Orlando Raymose, introduce. I'm going to look to reintroduce that. Hopefully, we'll get the support of our colleagues to push it back to Boston. Hopefully, once we catch these illegal dirt bikes, we can destroy them. So that's some of the red tape we have to go, go along or look at, I should say. But that's something I'm going to look to propose. Also, some shootings that were going on in our city and activity in the bus station area, where I know kids and teens were congregating at. So I had some conversations with Police Commissioner Larry Akers, and he assured me that his team is working together. And also, I know the Sheriff's Department is working on handling those issues there. They got some police details that are there now. I believe it starts at 12. I propose that we get there a little earlier because I've been getting phone calls that the, they're getting down there at like 6:00 AM. So just trying to be proactive, what we hear in our city, and make sure that our, our department heads are aware, especially those in law enforcement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Click Bruce. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to all. Mr. President, the General Government Committee met on March 31st, and we discussed...
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I did have a, a comment on the previous report, if I may.
Would you yield, Counselor Davila?
I yield.
Okay. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes, I think it's important to mention that we did have the discussion about ICE and how it's handled, and that the Police Department does not participate in the arrest of immigrants. They also circulated the Welcome City Trust Ordinance around to every member of the Police Department. Every member of the Police Department had to sign off that they read it and that they do not even ask for immigration status. One thing that I learned is that if you are, if police is called on a wellness check or anything like that, and you're sitting in the car on a motor vehicle, and they ask you for your license or your license, and you don't give it to them, that is an arrestable offense. But they do not work with ICE in making arrests of people. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is, because I just think it's important, and we keep hearing about ICE, is that they are going through training for it, and they just keep circulating the Welcome City Ordinance to make sure officers are aware. And those that are not aware, maybe are not reading their information thoroughly in the Police Department, and that too will be handled. So I just wanted to make sure that we got that information on the record. Thank you, Counselor Davila, for yielding, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the General Government Committee met on March 31st, and we discussed the reappointment of the Water and Sewer Commissioners, of three commissioners, being Ms. Vanessa Altero, Mr. Don Rodriguez, and Matthew, Mr. Matthew Donilon. Present in that meeting were all three commissioners, Josh Schimmel, the Director of Water and Sewer, and Counselor Tim Allen. I do have to say, Mr. President, before I get into the actual minutia of the meeting, one of the things that we did find on the meeting, which I find extremely concerning, is that this commissioner's terms are supposed to be staggered. And the obvious question is, why are they coming, why are they all being up now? It is my understanding, I will get this into more details in a little bit once we start the actual hearing, but they were not reappointed. Simple and straightforward that somebody forgot to reappoint them. And we will have a discuss, we will be having a discussion over that because I do have concerns on that aspect, that people are not reappointed in a timely fashion. On that, I would say, Mr. President, that I do intend, and I already spoke with the madam clerk, that I will hold a meeting to discuss this issue. Because if we have people, if we have commissioners in the Water and Sewer Commission out of turn, only God knows what's happening with the rest of commission boards throughout the city. And they do need to be appointed in a timely fashion. I told the commissioner, which I'm thankful that they're here, that I'm pretty annoyed with this. Doesn't make us look good. So, Mr. President, I'm going to be looking into that in the near future because I think that we're being a little too loosey-goosey with this appointments. With that being said, we will hear them out, and we'll show, I will explain as they'll come up one-to-one, their term, when would they're supposed to be expired, and when are they up to, up to what term they're going to be going forward to. That's my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Any other reports of committee?
Yes.
Counselor Santanello?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
The Health and Human Services Committee met last week. An item went to the committee on the Springfield Public Health Nurses Association ratification. We had a lengthy meeting on that. In attendance was Counselor Davila, Counselor Curran, Counselor Santanello, myself, Counselor Walsh, and I believe Tracy Whitfield was also at that meeting. In attendance was our HR Director and Helen Carlton. We had a lengthy discussion on the matter, and the committee decided on a unanimous vote to bring this back before the council for ratification. Unanimous.
Thank you, Counselor Santanello. Any other reports of committee this evening? Will the clerk please recognize the counselor in seat number one?
Present.
Okay. Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on acceptance of the committee reports, and turn your microphone on, please?
An acceptance, the report of committees, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Santanello?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Perez, absent Counselor Fenton.
Yes. More insufficient. Committee reports are accepted. Okay, Madam Clerk, item number one, it's not numbered, but zone change referral, please?
I have here a zoning change referral to amend Springfield zoning ordinance by amending Article 8, Section 8-4.
Okay, this is a referral to the Planning Board, so there's no vote that's required on this. Planning Board will make a recommendation. It'll appear back before the council at a hearings meeting. Item number one, Madam Clerk.
Item number one, I have the February revenue versus expenditure report.
Okay. Mr. Lonergan?
Good evening, counselors. Before years of February revenue expenditure report, we're approximately two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year. Our revenues are coming in right now about 68%, and the expenditures are at 67%. So we're on target with the budget.
Any questions for Mr. Lonergan? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, Counselor Govan?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I did mention, excuse me, at the committee meeting, that I would like to have, I guess, the, excuse me, the, I apologize, I've been sick, the report for March, I know that's going to be at the next meeting, as well as the number of funded vacancies that has, the money that has been saved to date. I want to make sure that we keep an eye on that.
We haven't forgotten you, Counselor. We will get that to you as soon as possible.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Any other counselors on the report? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
An acceptance, the revenue versus expenditure. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Govan? Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Santanello?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Perez, absent Counselor Fenton.
Yes. More insufficient. Report is accepted.
Counselor, I wasn't, I was left out. I say yes.
Oh, sorry. We may have missed Counselor Walsh there. Madam Clerk, could you please...
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Walsh will be recorded as a yes, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, Madam Clerk, item number two?
Item number two is reconfirmation, reappointment of Vanessa Altero to the Water and Sewer for a term expiring June 30th, 2026.
Okay. So this is an appointment for, yes, for Vanessa Altero to serve a term of July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Is there anyone here to speak on this petition? I think Ms. Altero is participating remotely.
Good evening.
Hi, Vanessa. Sorry, there's a lot of people on tonight, so that's why I got a swipe to see you, but now I got you. Okay, so Ms. Altero, you have the floor.
I'm, this is the third time that I come in front of this body for reappointment. My commitment to the Water and Sewer and the residents of Springfield is still as strong as it ever was. We're in the middle of a large capital improvement project, and if allowed, I would be grateful to see it through.
Questions for Ms. Altero. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Ms. Altero. It's good to see you.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us. And before I ask you, let me thank you for your service. You have been steadfast, a public servant to the city, and I want to acknowledge that, Ms. Altero. Mr. President, Ms. Altero, as it appears to me, and I know Josh is here, and Josh from the Water Department Director, if I'm mistaken, please correct me. Ms. Altero's term expires on June 30th. I believe that's going to go until 2028. Okay, June 30th, 28. As I made, as I commented on my introductory comments, there's three commissioners, two out of three are out of turn. Ms. Altero is the only one that is in line and appropriately in turn. I do have several questions, but I'm going to try to keep them, I'm going to ask some questions to all three candidates, and start with you, Ms. Altero. Can you give me a quick comment, and I will try to be brief? We had a rest session a little while ago during the speaker, talking about abatements. And it was talked about the, the, I think it was the, what is it called? Where you have a leak, there's one-time abatement. But one thing that caught my eye was, Ms. Altero, was possibly making, for the veterans, lowering the age requirement for them to benefit from an abatement. That's my first question. Just a quick thought on that, if you don't mind.
So I wouldn't oppose anything that would benefit our veterans. We do have a process for establishing our rules and our policies every year with the budget, when we present the budget or when we recommend the budget moving forward or vote on it. And so I appreciate the sentiment, and I don't know anybody on the commission that would be against helping veterans, but we will definitely take it under advisement. And Josh is there, who runs the day-to-day, and so he should be able to speak, speak to this as well.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sure he would love to, but I really want to hear from the commissioners today, not from Josh. No offense, Josh.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. So my, my next question is, and I will ask the same question that I asked you in the meeting, can you share your thoughts with me about the Project Labor Agreements?
I don't think it's a secret to anybody who reads the Republican that I am pro-labor, and I would vote yes for a PLA anytime it came in front of me.
Thank you, Ms. Altero. Ms. Altero, this question is new, and so completely new, and I have this thing, I like to think outside of the box. And as you know, we, we are facing certain times in the future. And the Water and Sewer Department, it is a critical entity, it's a semi- quasi-entity. So we, you guys make your own decisions. We appoint you, but you are a self-governing body, and we thank you and we respect you for that. As you know, I am the Chair of the Pilot Revenue Committee. As I keep saying, if I can't get money out of a rock, I will.
Okay.
I just don't take no for an answer. We were told a little while ago, it's no secret, it's been out on the news, that the School Department might be out $37 million. We were We were told that apparently there's commitment from the state that we're going to get that money, but I'm not putting all my eggs in one basket, there's just no way I'm going to do that. With that being said, I do know that, recently learned that other entities such as Chicopee, I believe Holyoke, part of Westfield, they, their water and sewer, they do make pilot payments, or some sort of an agreement thereof. I don't want you to fall off your chair on this, but can you give me your initial thoughts on that? I know it's a brand-new question.
Sure, my initial, absolutely, thank you. My initial thought is that any payments in lieu of taxes will directly affect our rates, so somebody's got to pay for it. We bond to do, to implement our capital improvement plan, and rates are the only revenue that come into the Water and Sewer Commission. So that would be the only way we would be able to pay payments in lieu of taxes, and so you would see a direct hit to the increase every year, should we put that in place.
Absolutely, no, I understand, but thank you, and that's something that I look forward to continue to discuss.
Sure.
It's a brand-new idea, outside of the box, but, you know, we got to put it on the board.
No, I appreciate it.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Otero.
No, I said I appreciate the sentiment. Everybody's got to tighten themselves up.
And Ms. Otero, my last question, and I finally got annoyed, I've always been very proud of our water, and let me tell you what, our water is safe to drink. When I go overseas, and when I go even within continental the US, I can tell the difference with the water quality, myself, I can tell. Lately, however, I have noticed that in my own house, when I open the water, I have this white cloudiness on top of my water.
Hmm.
And I'm noticing, I'm starting to look at the water a little funky. I know we saw, something came out recently, some sort of a warning or something, that just, I'm sorry, so can you explain to me, this, what the heck is that thing on my water?
I wish I could. I am not an engineer, and I definitely don't test the water, as part of being a
You do drink the water, right?
I do drink the water, I do. So if you've got something, I've got something too, but I cannot answer that question, I don't know what it is, and I would hate to speculate.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure one of the commissioners, even with Josh, in a little while, can shine a light on that. Ms. Otero, again, thank you, quite lovely, thank you for your time, and these are all three questions I will be asking to all the other two candidates. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel D'Avila. Any other questions for Ms. Otero on her appointment? Counsel Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. A couple of questions. Vanessa, similar to ones I asked last week, when we had the committee meeting on this, maybe, let me start with the regular communication was an issue that I mentioned last week, since we're kind of on the front lines with civic association meetings and dealing with taxpayers, et cetera, and I know you guys do a good job of getting around to civic associations. You know, I've just been concerned about the fact that, I think as you said in the meeting last week, it might have been Josh who said it, that six and a half, that the regular increase of six and a half to eight and a half percent could be expected over the, you know, near-term years. Is that, did I say that right, or do you agree with that?
Yes, so there is, that is the range, and we've been talking about this for a while. Again, we bond to, for our capital improvement projects. Our capital improvement projects are absolutely necessary. Our only source of revenue are ratepayers, and so to keep up with the demands of not only the industry, but also the costs of doing business, as you all know, are going up, we have to raise rates. That's the only way that we can continue to hold on to a strong bonding. Oh, God, my mind just went blank. Rate, and so we, that is our only source of revenue, so that should be expected, yes.
Okay, thanks. I didn't ask this last week, and which is, do you know the total project budget for the rebuild of the water treatment plant?
It's a moving target, I'd say. I mean, anytime you add tariffs to imports, you should expect that things are going to cost more.
But what's the range of what the bill is?
Um, it was a, it was a $300 million project, I expect it to be more, and I've always expected it to be more.
And that's being paid, is that being paid by rates, or is that being paid by money that you borrowed, et cetera?
We bond for our capital improvement projects, yes, so we have a debt service that we have to pay close attention to.
Okay. And my third and last question for now, I don't know if other people have questions, is the importance of the regular communication of budgetary challenges or information that you guys are dealing with. When I mentioned it last week in the committee meeting, everybody seemed agreeable to it. Tonight, Steve Lonergan was here just before you, giving us an update on the budget. We didn't ask him any more detailed questions, but he reported on where the budget is through eight months of the fiscal year, et cetera. I'm hoping that we can work something out, where you guys can also provide that to us on a regular basis. Do you think that'll be?
We do, we do provide that every month at our meeting, and our meetings are obviously open to the public, so that information is readily available every month for anyone who wants to log on to our monthly meeting.
You could.
And it's presented the same way the city presents theirs. All the things that you mentioned when we met in committee are discussed in relation to our budget.
Okay. Do you think you could send it to us, or we could come up with a process where we don't have to go get it, but it just comes to us, and we can include it in with our financial stuff that we're looking at from the city?
I would defer to council to see if that's an expectation we should meet beyond the meeting. So the answer is maybe.
Okay, I hope it turns to yes, but thanks for your answers, thanks for being here tonight. I'm all set, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Allen. Any other questions for Ms. Otero? Okay, Counsel Govan, then Counsel Santanella.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much, Vanessa, for being here and for serving on the Sewer and Water Commission for so long. Since your appointment is probably the only one that is, I guess, legitimate right now, because you're on target to be reappointed, I would certainly love to have you continue on the Sewer and Water Commission. A question that I have is regarding the rates, you know, I do have a lot of constituents reaching out, and they're very concerned. How are you guys, the Sewer and Water Commission, I guess, maybe looking at that? Is there a way that you guys can, I don't know if you do maybe investments, although now's not a good time for that, or maybe now is a good time? I digress. Yeah, how do you go about doing that, maybe taking into consideration that, you know, the residents that we have here in the city of Springfield, you know, their income is not getting any bigger in proportion to rates, the way inflation is, so how do you take that into consideration?
Sure, we have a customer assistance program that you have to qualify for, but it's underutilized, and so as much as we promote it and send things in the, you know, inserts in bills or utility bill, it's underutilized, and so we have that to help residents who are struggling to make their payments to, and then the commission as a whole is thinking about other ways to generate revenue, right? So there are conversations among the administration and among commissioners, with commissioners, about what are other ways to generate revenue, and we're working towards that end.
Okay, so I'm wondering, maybe, I know that a lot of resources are underutilized because they're not known about, right? So, and I know that you send the notices out, probably most people do, like I do, I'm guilty of it, take the bill and, you know, see how much is due, and throw the rest away, just recycle or whatever. There's a way, maybe we can work together somehow to get more of that information out. And I also heard in the meeting earlier today that the, I guess, the senior benefit is at 68, and I was just wondering if there's a way that we could, you know, bring it down, because you're eligible for ARPA, no, ARP, not ARPA, ARP at 55, right? So maybe 60 or 65, like the city has, as well as the benefits for veterans, if there's some way to look at that and kind of tweak that a little bit, so more people could take advantage of the benefits that you offer.
I appreciate both suggestions, and we, I think you'll hear from my other, from my colleagues on the commission that seniors and veterans, you know, that's hard to say no to, but it would be taken up by the commission.
Okay, thank you, Vanessa, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Govan. Counsel Santanella.
Yes, thank you so much, Vanessa. I just have a couple of questions. We have a major meeting coming up on Wednesday with the Forever Chemicals, with Senator Seer and Representative Hogan. It's been refiled in the legislature, as you're probably aware, and they had hearings as far as wastewater treatment plants and water supplies, and I believe that the Westfield River showed some contamination with forever chemicals at the time. Do you happen to know if we have any forever chemicals that are registering in our water supply through the EPA? And if we do, can you make those available to the committee?
I'm going to have to defer to Josh on that question. I would hate to answer that question incorrectly, so my apologies, but if Josh is given the chance, he could answer your question better than I can.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay, Counsel Walsh? Or Counsel Santanella, are you trying to hear from Mr. Schimmel? He is in the audience.
Oh, he is, yeah, sure, just to answer that quick question.
Mr. Schimmel, yeah, if you could come up, please. And then Counsel Santanella, if you could repeat the question, please.
The question is, we're having a major meeting on forever chemicals in the environment total, and some of the testimony that was given in the last year regarded wastewater treatment plants and water supplies, and I just wanted to make sure that our water is being tested through the EPA and reported, and if there's no forever chemicals in there, that's great. If there are, we should really know about it. But I think at the last meeting that we had with you about eight months ago, myself and one of the other counselors, you said that there were no forever chemicals in there that were registering, if I can recall correctly. Is that not true?
That's correct, Counselor. All of the testing to date has shown no forever chemicals, or PFOS and PFOA, in any of the drinking water, and that's all through required testing.
Through the EPA, correct?
Well, the testing is through independent labs, but it's dictated by Mass DEP and to some degree, the US EPA.
Thank you, that's great news. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel Santanella. Counsel Walsh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Vanessa, for answering a lot of those questions we're concerned about, and I just wanted to say that I plan on supporting your nomination. I'm always happy to see a qualified woman in a leadership role, and we look forward to seeing what you can do for our veterans and seniors, so good luck.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. Any other, Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure if I should ask the commissioner or the individual who just was present, but I'm curious about the actual report on the cancer risk that was in the paper. What is the actual chemicals, what is the cancer risk that they did a story on?
Josh, I'm going to leave that one to you.
Mr. Schimmel?
Sure, thank you. The notifications that you've received quarterly, on and off, more on than off since 2018, have to do with disinfection byproducts, and that's a mandatory requirement that we put those public notices out there. The risk associated with that is for consumption over decades or a lifetime, those chemicals and anything from a regulatory standpoint that is dictated through drinking water are highly regulated, and therefore, when, if there was a direct risk, an immediate risk, it would be in that notice to do not drink. So I think a lot of the language that's included in those notices, as I said, is required, so the risk is very low. There's an abundance of caution that is required by EPA and Mass DEP in order to do all of the testing that we do, and how it's included in those public notices. So it is the impetus for building a brand-new water treatment plant without taking up too much time, counselors.
If I may, when you're saying that it's a low risk, right?
Correct.
Before it was a low risk, so say, do you project it to be a high risk?
No, no.
So did you project it, before it was a low risk, did you project a risk at all? And why did you, why didn't you, and why, you know, like, what, I know as far as like some of the chemicals, because I'm familiar with some things, like you can, like you can drink fluoride and stuff like that, but, I mean, there are side effects, we find that there are things that are side effects. What is the actual agent that, because there is a certain agent that you're using as far as disinfection that is going, that is known to cause cancer? What is that? And do we have to use it? Is there other ways of actually treating our water?
So the disinfection byproducts form between organic matter and the use of chlorine for disinfection. We use chlorine for disinfection, as almost all water suppliers do. It's considered one of the most monumental public health discoveries in civilization, the use of chlorine. It's eliminated disease across the globe, so we don't have plans on eliminating the use of chlorine. The issues are, and to your question, we don't project what the risks are, those risks are determined by the EPA and not by us. They set the limits, and then we meet the limits. I think it's important to understand that our treatment plants were built in 1930 and 1974, and that those regulations weren't even promulgated until the late 80s and 90s, so we're dealing with a treatment plant that is older by decades and decades than the regulations that we're trying to meet, and that's why we're building a new treatment plant, because the treatment plant itself cannot remove the disinfection byproducts. So neither the chlorine that we use by itself in the doses that we use is harmful, nor the naturally occurring organics that come into the reservoir, the leaf litter from the forest, but when you combine the two together, they create disinfection byproducts, and that is the regulated substance that we're talking about. So again, the regulations state what the levels are to be concerned, we include that in the notices, but by no means is the water unsafe to drink. The water is safe to drink. If at any point in time the water was not safe to drink, the public would be notified immediately, and those are all with the risks that are identified by EPA and DEP and the regulatory agencies about when to consume water.
And I understand, and I appreciate your work, I just always am wary when it comes to studies like that, because they have no statistical, you know, relevance, because you're still forecasting, like, at first, when cigarettes, we said cigarettes were good for us, we say fluoride is good for us, so there are certain things where we say, hey, this is great, and then after, you know, so your study is saying, within, say, 20 years, 30 years, when my kids are now ready to have kids and things, this might affect them at that point, correct?
There is that possibility, but all of the epidemiological and toxicology issues are not issues that Water and Sewer Commissions or public utilities dictate, that's all from agencies in the federal or state government.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Counsel Whitfield?
Thank you. Josh, my question is still for Josh, because I don't think it's something that Commissioner Toro could answer, so I'm going to have to agree with Counsel D'Avila and Counsel Brown. I went to get, I washed some cups out yesterday, I know I rinsed them good, we went to get some water, well, the kids did to drink, and it was like, wait, there's some cloudy stuff on the top, and I thought it was because I didn't rinse the cups out good enough, and maybe it had to. And I thought it was because I didn't rinse the cups out good enough and maybe it had dishwashing liquid in it. But then we rinsed it out again and the same thing happened. So what is that?
Counselor, I don't have an answer for you. What it sounds like is probably we may have been flushing um hydrant. I didn't see any main breaks on the list yesterday. When we have a main break, oftentimes that can introduce air and turbulence into the water. So sometimes we get cloudy water in that case. Um, other reasons why that would happen is if we're flushing water in the area. So if you see hydrants, we do that to increase water quality and diminish the age of the water to uh reduce the disinfection byproducts that we were just talking about. So um I I did not hear that there were a ton of complaints today that came in. Usually if we have something that's widespread, um, I find out about it pretty quickly. So it may be a localized issue. But again, we say this all the time, um, call our customer service number and we will dispatch a team to every call that comes out. And they'll come and they'll run your water for you. They'll take a look. They'll look in the street, or they may have the answer saying, hey, we're we're flushing hydrants right around the corner there. Run your water for two minutes and um it should be fine. So I I can't say standing up here that I'm aware of any water quality issues that are widespread.
Thank you. I guess I gotta do a better job of reporting it because I just was like, pour that out, drink bottled water. We're not messing with this tap water in Springfield. Like I always say, even at our community events, I will not call the Water and Sewer um Department right now to, and you guys do a great job at events, but I will not use it um because I don't want any of our constituents getting sick on my watch. So we just have been um asking for bottled water at our community events like Juneteenth and others. And because it just doesn't feel safe. And like Counselor Brown said, like, it may not have an impact right now, but it may have an impact in the future. And that is not a risk that I'm willing to take for my family. So um outside of washing clothes and washing up, that's as far as we we go in my family with Springfield uh water or water. Um, so I I'm just saying that on the record. And then there was a comment made about underutilization of the benefits that are provided to city residents. Um, first, what, how much is in those funds? How are the residents notified? Do we go to the different communities? I know it's placed in a bill. Sometimes you don't even want to look at your water bill. So you um open it up, you get the price, you pay it. You don't look at all those other documents behind it. How else can we get this information out to the uh constituents?
So we, it does come in your bill. Um, you, we put inserts in the bills um all the time. Um, and we've got a team that is at all the community councils um providing information. If there is a better way, um, a way that we could get the information to you as, you know, this body um that you could then disseminate to the folks who need it, we would be grateful for your help. Um, but we are
Yeah.
uh pretty mobile in terms of getting stuff out there. And we actually partnered with the um Valley Opportunity Council when they were doing Fuel Assistance uh when their season was going on. Because if you qualified for Fuel Assistance, you qualified for um our Customer Assistance Program. And that was um, that was pretty successful. Uh, but but it, we could, we, it is underutilized, in my opinion. And I think that um as much as we do, your help would be greatly appreciated.
I'd love to help. Like, a lot of us sit on different um community boards. We run them, like Counselor Govan, run the Indian Orchard um Citizens Council, I'm on the May Square C three. And like, a lot of us and Counselor Davila, like, all of us are like into some groups. And it's different with Fuel Assistance because Fuel Assistance can go toward the tenants, right? Um, the the Water and Sewer Bill typically goes toward the owner. So will the owner still qualify um for these programs? And maybe that's the reason that is underutilized. Maybe we should look at um what the income guidelines are and maybe um increase them a bit because most of the owners of the property income is probably a bit higher than those that are on Fuel Assistance. So we might want to look at some of the guidelines and make changes there.
Yeah, our, the only people that get a water bill are people who own a home. So 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 you wouldn't get a a a water bill if you're a tenant.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But Fuel Assistance, you can get as a tenant. And so their income is a bit lower, right, than maybe the owner of the home. And so maybe the guidelines need to be looked at because if you're going by Fuel Assistance guidelines, the owners may not qualify. The owners of the homes may not qualify for these programs because their income may be too high or whatsoever. So um maybe that would be a good step to look at the guidelines when we're talking about Water and Sewer and not put them at the same guidelines as Fuel Assistance. That really doesn't make sense to me. Um, and I, and I, yeah.
We find it's hardly ever the case that a renter is paying water.
No, what I'm saying is if you're using Fuel Assistance guidelines, you're going by renters' income. But you should be going by owners' rank, owners of the homes' income and not the renters' income. So I'm saying the guidelines, if you're saying the guidelines are equivalent to Fuel Assistance, then that's gonna cut a lot of people out that are homeowners because their income is not as low as folks that are qualifying for Fuel Assistance. So maybe looking at the guidelines, more people will qualify and apply. I don't really know all of those um assistance programs, but definitely if you could send them to us and we could take a look, I would be more than happy to bring them to the communities that I'm involved in and um get their feedback and maybe bring that back to you all. But like equi- equating it to people that qualify for Fuel Assist- Fuel Assistance doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Um, that's all I was just trying to say, like, guidelines should be like vastly different for owners of homes than they are for renters of homes. So that's all I was trying to say. And I don't know if that, if that clears it up for you or not, but hopefully.
I understand what you're saying. It's two different, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, it's two different pockets of people. Yeah, populations, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Davila?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick follow-up uh question to Josh. I know you just took a seat, Josh. Um, Josh, uh, you did say that uh if people like me are having this issue with this clouding and stuff on top of the water, they can call, you guys will send out somebody to to take a look. Uh, is there a fee for that assessment?
Uh, no, our 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 uh field services team and water quality team will go out and uh look at any water quality complaint. Um, depending, you know, i- if you end up having something wrong, particularly with your service or your house, there may be a fee, but for a a site visit uh on a water quality call, there is no, no service charge.
Excellent. I thought it's important for people at home to know that. And also just to let you know, myself, um, I will be calling tomorrow if I get the same thing. But uh I've been having this issue in my own house for at least two to three weeks now. Uh, so I know you say you haven't had any um calls or any spread concerns, but I noticed. I'm a little concerned with whatever it is. I don't know what it is. There's nothing growing in it. But, you know, it's a little unnerving to me, so uh, Josh, I thank you and uh thank you for your help.
Yeah, just to to be clear, I would suggest to everybody, the first time a- a- immediately, if you have an issue with your water or your sewer service, call us. We should be the first call that you make. Don't wait, and you'll get a very quick response from us.
Do later. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Govan, again?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just to follow up on that, Josh, uh, so do, would they call three-one-one or would they call the Sewer and Water Commission?
You would call the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, just for the public's uh edification. Thank you.
And and all of that, all that information is on our social, it's on our website, um, waterandsour.org. And uh you can find all the contact information.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Any other counselors on the appointment of Ms. Otero? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on confirmation of the appointment.
Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanella?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Clint Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez. Absent Counselor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient. Confirmation is approved. Thank you, Ms. Otero, for your service.
Thank you so much.
Next item, Madam Clerk, number three.
Um, reconfirma- reappointment of Dan Rodriguez to the Water and Sewer Commission with a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
I see Mr. Rodriguez is here. Mr. Rodriguez, would you mind coming forward? This is for a appointment to Water and Sewer Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Mr. Rodriguez.
Did I hit the right? I did, okay. Uh, thank you for having me here. It's been a pleasure to serve on the Water Commission. Um, let's see, my son is twenty-three, so I've been on the commission for twenty-two years. Um, it's been a pleasure to work with our current commissioners. And I I'd also like to take it one minute, and I'm sure my fellow commissioners would agree with me, take a minute to um recognize uh Bill Leonard, who has been the commissioner for even longer than that. He stepped down and Matt Donovan took over for him. Uh, Bill Leonard is the standard for commissioners for any commission. He's been a wonderful uh person for the city. Um, so I just thought I'd take a moment, since we didn't have anything for him in that regard. Um, uh, than that, it's been my pleasure to serve and I look forward to serving again, so. Questions for me?
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Rodriguez? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, good to see you. Uh, thank you for being here. Allow me to first uh to have some simple questions that I asked Ms. Otero. Um, they're gonna change questions, but uh, uh, first of all, thank you for your service. I think you say during the committee meetings that you've been at commission since two thousand and two or two thousand and three?
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you for that real um, that's real service. And I want you to know that um I appreciate it and I do appreciate your logical arguments and your straightforwardness. And uh I I am the same way, Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, I'm gonna ask you the same three questions. Uh, first, uh, the issue with um the assistance for the veterans, uh, lowering the age threshold, what are your thoughts on that?
So the uh, it was, I will say that we we do have uh services available. And um I didn't realize that it was different here in the city. That's the first time I've heard of that. Of course, if it was brought to my attention, it never registered with me. So um I'm certainly open to look at that.
Yep.
Um, and and to that point, with our customer ser- assistance program, one of, and there's been a lot of discussion. I don't want to lengthen it anymore, but one of the issues we have, it's it's not that we're turning people away. It is, unfortunately, it's a system that depends on on people requesting it. And and I'll give you a, an example of myself. Uh, my parents, who have both since passed, but they were residents in East Forest Park for many years. Counselor Allen knew them. Um, they were senior citizens. I was a commissioner for be- for fifteen years before I recommended they get the senior citizen discount. And my father was a veteran and I didn't know that I could get him a discount. So being a commissioner myself, I fell down on that opportunity to, you know, to reduce their expenses. So it is, a lot of it is, depends on people actually coming forward. Um, but we are definitely open to, yeah, we we put the programs in place for a reason, to be utilized. And it's not a situation where we're, any of the, any of the finances have come to a point where we're like, whoa, 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 we're spending too much money on that. Hasn't been that yet. Um, it's been more of, okay, how do we communicate more? And uh some of these programs, like Senior Citizen, has been around for a long time. Customer assist- customer assistance has only been around for three or four years? Four years, okay, so that's new. And I just pulled up the numbers. Year-to-date, we had four hundred and thirty ratepayers apply and get awarded eighty thousand dollars. So it's being utilized um and to a decent amount. But whether or not it's being utilized by everybody who could utilize it, that's a function of understanding and their willingness to apply.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, before I go to my next question, Mr. President, I would like to say that Mr. Rodriguez's term, as I mentioned before, uh, unfortunately, Mr. Rodriguez is the one commissioner who's out of turn the most. Uh, it is my understanding that he was supposed to be reappointed back in two thousand and twenty-three, Mr. President. This is two thousand and twenty-five. This is serious business. This affects bond rating, not to mention that I think it makes us look bad. But I'm not putting that on you, Mr. Rodriguez, to be fair. Uh, but I am going to be looking at this because this is the hundredth time that I say this. I'm really ticked off about this. Anyways, without being said. Um, and I think we are appointing you now, if the council chooses, uh, to twenty-twenty-six, is that correct?
Yeah, for what? The, for the, what would be the balance of my three-year terms?
Correct.
Which will end next, in twenty-twenty-six. So then I would be back for another vote.
And I will put you guys into this tiger pattern that you're supposed to be in. Okay. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, moving on to my other two questions. Uh, the pilots, same question that I asked Counselor, excuse me, Counselor, Commissioner Otero. Uh, what are your thoughts on on pilots, seeing that Westfield, Holyoke, Chico P, that do make some sort of payments? What are your thoughts on that?
Uh, paying us?
No, not you. The pay- payments involve taxes, I know. All the entities, Water and Sewer does it. Uh, again, I'm just thinking outside of the box, and let me ask you, you see why I do that? Because in about two months, we're gonna be presented a billion-dollar budget. And then in December, we're gonna be setting tax rates. I'm getting into this argument about property taxes, and we're gonna get into this, into that. Again, I'm turning every rock that I can possibly think of, so I think it's a fair question to ask.
Yeah, so uh we work, when we do our budget process and we work through our, all of our expenses and income sources, we work with the city closely to to look at what the city services re- require of us as far as water and sewer and uh what we require of the city as well, because the city provides us services as well. And we look to always find a way to um manage that in the most effective way. Or or said another way, you don't want to double-charge anybody for something, uh, which is another way, another thing that can happen. You know, you could double-charge a ratepayer for something that they're paying in taxes
Right.
and water rates. Um, so that gets scrutinized annually through the bu- budget process. Um, and we work closely with the city's uh budget folks. Um, historically, it had been Pat Burns, who's now working over at Water and Sewer, would work closely with uh our controller, which was uh uh Tony, and um come up with whatever would make sense to find a way to reduce expenses, but cover expenses. I think uh Commissioner Otero did say that when we, we only have income coming from ratepayers. So if we take some money away from one spot, it's gotta come from somewhere else. You know, it's it's like a big balloon. You push it here, it pops out there, so.
I understand, I understand. Uh, thank you, Mr. Rodrigo, uh, Mr. Rodriguez. My last question, uh, regarding the PLAs. Uh, you and I had a discussion on that on the uh General Government Committee.
Sure.
Uh, you made an argument. Uh, let me say that um, uh, as I said before, I am staunch believer in labor. Uh, you yourself took a vote against uh the West Parish uh being a, I believe, PLA. It ended up in the courts. Um, I believe you took another vote, uh, that impacted labor in the past. Um, like I told you, I I I I have to sleep with myself. Uh, I believe in labor, I believe in my principles. Uh, I'm gonna give you the floor in a second. Uh, I told you at the committee meeting, I'll tell you again. Uh, out of principle, I am inclined not to volunteer a favor. I'm gonna be straightforward, honest with you. Convinced me that I should vote for you.
So when the the water plant project came forward and then we were approached uh just before we went for financing for the project with an option of a PLA. For 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 me, this concept or this issue has never been a labor issue at all. Has nothing to do with being pro or con against labor. Um, we were at the point with a three-hundred-million-dollar project, where we're going out to bid. And our bidding is tied into uh financing through a program called WIFIA. Um, as, since we bond all our projects, WIFIA is a a federal pro- program that's giving us very low-interest loans. If we don't get the money from there and we still have to do the project, then we get a higher interest loan. So with a three-hundred-million-dollar project, you could imagine what even a small change in percentage of interest would make. Um, and, you know, that basically affects who? Ratepayers. So at at the very end of our project um process, we're ready to go out to bid, we were approached with the idea of a uh PLA. Um, we asked questions of the staff and our engineers and of the group presenting the PLA uh about what the benefits were and what uh what the risks might be. what the benefits were and what the risks might be. And there were a number of benefits there outlined. Then we also asked, as commissioners, we asked, did those benefits that were presented, did they differ significantly from what our bid package has already had? And we were, it was explained to us that there were some differences, and we asked, could we make sure that regardless of how this vote goes, that those conditions remain in our new package? And we were told it would. We then had another meeting the next month from the non PLA group as well, that had some concerns. We seek advice from council. At that point, advice from council advised us that there are some cases throughout the state where a PLA was challenged, and it slowed down the project. Well, with the nature of where we were in the project, it was too late to be slowed down. Because the finances would be at risk if we didn't lock them in. So it was deemed, at that point, as too much of a risk compared to the benefit, which we were assured we could get whether or not we had the PLA, the benefit to the ratepayers, whether or not we had the PLA in place. Because we are familiar with doing major projects, you just did the York Street project, and we've done these major projects, over 70% of our bidders are labor bidders already. So it's not like we're saying, don't go labor, or do go labor, we're saying, how do we go forward with the best project? So I voted against it, in the interest of keeping things going, because I felt the risk to, the risk of losing the financing, the low-interest financing, for a benefit that I couldn't be proven I was not going to get based on the flexibility we had in our bid package, because it was brought forward at the bottom of the ninth inning. That was the first I heard of it, you know, like a month before we sent out the bid package. It's a kind of a tough time to make changes in a $300 million project. So anyhow, we voted, ultimately, it was voted for. I just, I voted against, but it was approved by the Board of Commissioners, and it was challenged in court by the non PLA group, as was predicted by original, the council, initial council's review. And at that point, it went to court. Fortunately, it was heard in court quickly, and, but the court upheld the claim. And at that point, all three of us commissioners agreed that in order to keep financing, at this point, there was absolutely no chance to go otherwise than to go ahead and keep the language out, or, I'm sorry, keep the language in, but not sign a PLA, have it be subject to a PLA upfront. Bid packages went out with the PLA language, but not having a PLA signed. That's how we went forward.
Mr. Rodriguez, I'm going to wrap up in the next 30 seconds. First of all, I want to thank you for your explanation, sir. Let me tell you what my biggest concern is with non PLA projects. It is my understanding they tend to be, those projects that are not PLA involved tend to be over budget, they usually have no apprenticeship programs, and the big one is, they usually, they promise you the moon, but they bring people from outside the area to work, and we need people here to work, local people. This is a hard-to-bear issue, but I do thank you for your service. I want you to know that I thank you for voting against you today. I do appreciate your service. And I tell you that, because I like to look people straight in the eyes, I'm a straight shooter. And I do thank you from the bottom of my heart for this back and forth, and I wish you the best luck, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Take care, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you. I guess I'm just trying to understand the process of the appointment. I don't quite think it's the fault of the commissioners, but I also don't know the process. Is there anyone who can explain that, the reappointment?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Sure. Well, as each commissioner's appointment comes up, we tend to notify the mayor's office, because the mayor's office selects a commissioner that then gets, or he nominates, in which case then the council will approve it. So we notify the mayor's office as we get closer to our deadlines, and then we request to be on the council's schedule through, I'm assuming through the clerk's office? You know, anyhow, the communication comes from us and goes to the, to the, to the City Hall, and then we wait and ask, when can we get on the schedule? Because we are at the, you know, there's, you guys know better than I do that your schedule is quite full, usually. So, and if we don't hear anything, then we'll make another request and another request. There is an unusual circumstance right now in with Commissioner Donnelly, in that he got put in place to fill in behind Bill Leonard, who left partway through his appointment. So, he's kind of a transitional one. I'm really the one that's kind of been delayed. And I can, I will say though, as a commissioner, whether it's this board or any other board, it is good to stay on a, on a schedule of knowing that you are not just in the position, but that people want you there, you know?
So, I guess my question is, was the administration, mayor's office, clerk's office notified in time? Or was there a delay there?
I don't have that information. I don't actually do the notification. It, you know, comes from the, you know, organization, from the executive director's office, communicates with the City Hall on a regular basis.
Okay. Well, I guess I need to talk to Josh. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to hear from Mr. Schimmel, Counselor Whitfield?
Right now, yeah.
Yes, I do, right now. Mm-hmm.
Sure. Good evening.
Yeah, I, I understand that you heard my question, but I'll just repeat it. Was the mayor's office, clerk's office notified in time about the reappointments?
Yeah, I believe they, I believe they were, Counselor. I think, as Commissioner Rodriguez stated, I think the confusion with this came when Commissioner Leonard retired, and we had to fill, we notified the mayor's office to fill the rest of his term, and I think it was thereafter that the renewals notifications failed to get through. But I will say, from a statutory standpoint, none of the terms of any of the commissioners have expired. They continue until somebody replaces them, so none of the Board of Commissioners' terms have ever expired.
I just think it's unfair that other people do not have the opportunity to submit resumes or express interest in being a commissioner on the Water and Sewer Commission. I think the process is not fair, because it should be a reappointment process, not you notify that the term is all ready up, and then automatically the people that are in place are reappointed. Like, that is not how it should go. I'm not blaming you, Josh, or your, I'm really blaming the administration here, because a lot of the commission appointments operate the same way, and it's just not a fair process. People should have the opportunity, like the police commission is operating now, if someone leaves, or if a term is up, other people have the opportunity to submit letters of interest. That's the way it should be. That's a democracy. It shouldn't just, you know, just keep happening just because, just because for 23 years, or however many years, it just keeps happening. And are these appointments paid?
Counselor, just a couple things. No, none of these appointments are paid for their service, and there's a statutory requirement that it is the mayor of Springfield that solely appoints the commissioners, and that's part of Chapter 40N of Mass General Law.
Yeah, I'm very aware of that. I'm very aware of that, and so that comment wasn't really specifically meant for you, but it was meant to be on the record, that something in the appointment process of all these boards and commissions need to change, because you have people that sit on these boards and commissions over and over and over, and just by going through my own process with some of these boards and commission, it's unfair, it's biased. I mean, I experienced it for myself, so I'm not speaking from anyone else's perspective but my own, and it needs to be changed. We need new ideas, we just need to start looking at the process. So I'm not blaming you in any way, outside of, was the mayor's office, the city clerk's office notified in enough time? And that's the only thing that will fall on your plate, Josh. You say you think so, but that is not a concrete answer for me. I would like to know, and you could go back and research it if you don't have that information right now, and let us know if the mayor's office, if the city clerk's office was notified in time for these reappointments to go back before the city council. So if you don't have that definitive answer, can you please send that information to the city council?
Sure.
Thank you. That's all I have. I thank all the commissioners for their service and what they do. I mentioned a couple of things that I would like looked at, and that's how these benefits can be communicated more to the public, and maybe looking at the guidelines. Outside of that, I think you all are doing a great job, keep up the great work, but the processes have to be tight, too. So that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Govan?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your service, John, as well. So I guess I had the same question that Counsel Whitfield, Madam Vice President, had regarding the appointments and why, you know, it wasn't done the way it was supposed to be done. So it sounds like, what I heard, I think Josh said, that if the appointment is up and there's not a kind of like reappointment, the person will stay on for as long until the next reappointment happens. So I agree with Counsel Whitfield that there should be a process to make sure that, you know, people in our city have an opportunity to also sit on boards like these, because especially younger people, I'm looking at, you know, there are some young people coming out of college, you know, looking for things to contribute to their community, and they're coming with fresh ideas, they're coming with, you know, some really, really wisdom and knowledge, as young as they might be, right? So we need to give them a chance. Not that, you know, any of the commissioners are not qualified or not doing, you know, the best that they can do, but I agree that we need to have, make sure that that process is, you know, fair and it's open to everybody, because we do in this city have a history of, you know, making appointments, and they're like lifetime appointments, and we know what can happen when that happens, not always a good thing. So my question to you, John, is, you know, should you stay on the commission, would you be willing, and I asked Vanessa about possibly coming out into the community and sharing, you know, some of those resources that you all have, like at our Indian Orchard Citizens Council out here in Indian Orchard, we have a monthly meeting, we have seniors, we have senior bingo, and then lunches, during lunchtime, we could present information to them. So I'm wondering if, you know, you guys would be willing to come out and do some sort of a tour, so to speak, of the resources? Because again, the information that even John himself, a commissioner, wasn't aware of it for his parents, you know, so our residents who maybe, you know, they take their bill, or they get it online even, and a lot of times when you go online, you don't get all the information necessarily the way you could get it otherwise. So would you all be willing to come out into the community and, you know, speak to the constituents, and maybe even listen from them at times?
Well, actually, we're happy to do that, and we have increased our community outreach over the last few years. We have a couple of people that are dedicated to getting out more and more, especially after COVID. You know, COVID kind of changed the world for a lot of people, and some of these citizen councils have changed quite a bit after COVID. And so, yes, definitely, we are always looking to do that, and we get, at the commission level, we're now getting regular updates on the communication events that are going on. And can, is it enough? I mean, it always can be done more, but I mean, there's no, I'd be foolish to say, oh, we're doing enough, you know?
Right, right. No, I've had Jamie Bartek come out, and she, when she talked about the power plant, so I'm not sure if she's able to talk about those programs that you all have, but that'd be something that I'd really be interested in having someone come out to the neighborhood council out here and do some of that work. Thank you.
Jamie heads up the group that does that, and, you know, another thing that we've recently done to reach into the community as well, is we have this pathways program where we bring in, we're working with high school students who work with us in an internship over the summer, and we hope that they'll continue to go on in the, in the field of science, hopefully, in water and sewer, just giving them exposure. I think, how many, we had like 12 students last year, and how many students do we have?
Twelve a year. We have over 100 applicants.
Over 100 applicants this year. The first year, we didn't have 100 applicants, because it was new. So, just another way of doing things a little different, trying to reach out to the community and expose the community to the facilities that we have here, and just, it's about creating that buzz.
Right, right. Thank you, and thank you, Dana. I called you John earlier. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. President.
My favorite uncle's name is John, so I don't mind.
Oh, good. Same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to be quick on this, more of a comment that Judge just made, because if I heard him correctly, Judge just told us that the commissioner's terms have not expired. If that was the case, why are we here? If, excuse, yeah, if that's the case, if they didn't expire, why are we here for reappointment? Now, they do serve, according to what Josh himself explained to us at the subcommittee meeting, that the commissioners do serve until they are either reappointed or they are replaced. But that has to be, that has to be reappointed. So the terms did expire, and I, the same question I just stated, I may hear, I asked at the subcommittee. So why are we here? If the terms have not expired, why are we wasting all time with all this discussion? The term did expire, and the reason we need to reappoint is because this affects the bond rating and the audits. That was the explanation that was given to us. If you don't think that's a good reason to be critical and to oversight on this, then I don't know what. Can you imagine, Mr. President, that somebody somehow forgets that there has to be a reelection process? Can you imagine? People will be out there with forks and sickles. And yes, I'm ticked off about this, that somebody forgot, oops. I don't know who it was, the mayor, the clerk, or the commissioner. I don't know, and I'm not putting fingers one way or the other, but I am being critical on this. I'm not going to be pacified and accept their terms have not really expired. It did expire. And we are the appointing authority. Now, to what my colleagues just said, the mayor can put forward whatever he wants. And yes, I do think we do have a problem, which we have talked before, about making dispositions more accessible to the average Joe. And believe me when I tell you, I am grateful for these people, because I know they love the city. Why else would they be going through this headache? But this is not about them. I think this reappointment is, it's bigger, it's a bigger conversation. So I do want to make that clear, because I don't want people watching at home to have the understanding that the term has not really expired. It did expire, somebody deep dropped the ball, and we need to fix this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Any other counselors on the appointment of Mr. Rodriguez? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Please unmute.
Yes.
I can't hear.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
No.
No, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Klickbruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez. Absent, Counsel Fenton.
Yes, more insufficient. Appointment is confirmed. Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Reappointment of Matthew Danley to the Water and Sewer.
Okay.
With a term expiring.
Yes, more insufficient. Appointment is confirmed. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Reappointment of Matthew Donnelly to the Water and Sewer.
Okay.
With the term expiring June 20th, 2027.
Just want to remind counselors, we are on item number four of a 27-item agenda, so hopefully we can get through these a little quicker. We shall see. Mr. Donilon, if you are here, you are up for reappointment. This is Agenda Item Number Four. We'd invite you to say a little bit about yourself and your interest in the position, please.
Good evening. I was appointed in 6/30/24 as a replacement for the resigning Bill Leonard, who was on the commission for over 31 years. And, uh, I would consider it an honor to continue the service through this appointment. I'm a lifelong resident of the City of Springfield. I am a retiree of the City of Springfield. Last 14 years, we've spent at the Water Sewer Commission as Personnel Director. And any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Donilon. Any questions for Mr. Donilon on his appointment? Counsel Davila?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just to be fair, I did say I was gonna make, ask the same three questions, uh, to all candidates. And, Mr. Donilon, first of all, thank you for your service. Thank you for stepping up. Uh, I ask you some questions. Do you need me to repeat them? I just want to be consistent with what I do, uh, regarding the, uh, possibly helping all the veterans with assistance, allowing the threshold to 65.
Most definitely. Uh, we would have to, uh, work with our, with our Councilman Norm, Norm Guz, Attorney Norm Guz, uh, to figure out how we would approach that. But, uh, my older brother Bob is a disabled Amer- a veteran, Vietnam veteran. So be certain that I would support that.
Thank you, Mr. Donilon. Uh, regarding the pilot programs, what are your, your thoughts on the payments in lieu of taxes?
Pardon me, I couldn't.
Payments in lieu of taxes. As I say, Holyoke, Westfield, Chicago.
Oh, yes, yeah.
They make payments. Just a thought, just your thoughts.
Yeah. The, um, the pilot program that, that goes on in those cities, um, is well thought out, I'm sure. And we would have to approach it, uh, with the same
Careful.
kind of endeavor as in with the, uh, counsel to the, counsel to the commission.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Donilon, my last question, the PLAs, uh, project labor agreements.
Yes. Yes, I voted for it. Uh, I'm pro-labor, as we discussed in the, in the, uh, in the subcommittee hearing. You are, I believe it was a Teamsters member, and I said my father was a pipe fitter, Pipe Fitters Union. So, uh, the waters run deep, and yes, I would be supportive.
Thank you, Mr. Donilon. Very, very, uh, kind for your words. Um, Mr. President, I just, as he pointed out, uh, I am a proud Teamster myself, and I have no financial or direct interest in the decisions that the Water and Sewer makes, other than making sure that my water is safe and clear without any cloudiness and white stuff on it. Uh, with that, thank you, Mr. Donilon. Uh, thank you so much, Donilon. My apologies. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Any other counselors on, uh, Mr. Donilon's appointment? Counsel Brown?
I just had a quick question, um, just for information. Uh, is this a paid appointment?
No, it's not.
So it's a volunteer? And you volunteered for how long?
Uh, I've been on since '24. Uh, the senior over here has been on for 21 years.
Thank you for your service. That's all. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Any other counselors? Counsel Curran?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Just on that point from Counsel Brown, uh, thank you for your service and volunteerism, Mr. Donilon and all the coun- and all the appointees, Mr. Rodriguez and Ms. Otero. Uh, it's great to have this many residents willing to volunteer, such an important and obviously, uh, a vital, uh, authority here in the region. Uh, but your appointments not affect not just Springfield, but the neighboring towns, Long Meadow, Wilbraham, East Long Meadow, uh, as well, and Lalo, I believe. And just a, a, a point, uh, commentary maybe to, uh, the Executive Director. Uh, they are volunteer positions, and we certainly have, uh, terrific candidates before the council tonight. But in order to maintain the level of competency and professionalism that we're seeing here tonight, perhaps the idea of a stipend, uh, $5,000 for the commissioners spread throughout the towns. I mean, you have multiple towns. I think it would be appropriate, uh, due to the level of, uh, in importance, uh, the Springfield Water and Sewer, uh, has not only to the City of Springfield, but throughout Western Massachusetts. So just a thought, I don't know how you would put that together, uh, but if you could spread it throughout the towns, I think it would be constructive, so that, to Counsel Whitfield's point, that we do have, uh, a vigorous application process and people interested in this, uh, authority, uh, as it touches, uh, everybody here in Western Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Curran. Any other counselors on the appointment? Counsel Allen?
I was involved in the meeting last week with Counsel Davila and myself, meeting with 90 minutes, which I think we're gonna tie here tonight. Um, but, um, it's time to bring it to an end, but I just want to say to you, Matt, uh, and, and, and everybody, that it's interesting that all three people want to be reappointed, and that there's challenges on this board. We have water quality challenges. We have payment challenges, you know, rate increase kind of challenges, and we haven't even talked about the project, which is $300 million, and, um, I'm sure it'll be a challenge to keep that thing on schedule and on budget, uh, because that's just the way things like that go. So I appreciate, um, appreciate your level of interest in continuing to do the job, Dan and Matt and Vanessa. And, uh, I think we'll probably be talking more, um, because, um, we have so many points of intersection at this point. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Counsel Allen. Counsel Santanello?
Yeah, I just want to say that I've known Matt Donilon for many years, uh, going back to the treasurer's office, collector's office. Uh, he knows the water department inside and out, and he's a man of honor and integrity, and I'd be honored to vote for him tonight, uh, for the reappointment to this board.
Thank you, Counsel Santanello.
Thank you, Counsel Santanello. Any other counselors? Okay. I do have one comment that I'd like to make on it, so, um, the rules stipulate it would go to Counsel Allen. Counsel Allen, if you want to come up. Otherwise, if you wave, Counsel Edwards can do it. Are you willing, Counsel Edwards? Okay.
President, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just, I'm gonna be very brief. I just want to say, um, that I appreciate all the council's diligence on this. Uh, I feel very strongly that we've got three really qualified, uh, volunteers helping the city in this regard, Mr. Donilon, Mr. Rodriguez, Ms. Otero. Um, they've really demonstrated an aptitude to take on really difficult issues and a lot of, uh, quite frankly, thankless tasks as volunteers. I mean, they're not elected or paid in these positions, and over the course of the last few years in particular, as utilities and, um, the water department in Springfield specifically have come under additional scrutiny, I think they've held up as, uh, excellent stewards of that department. And, uh, I've known Mr. Donilon probably for longer than I've known Mr. Rodriguez and, uh, Ms. Otero, but I know them to all be really dedicated people, uh, to this agency, and I think that we're lucky to have them. So I'm, uh, happy to support, uh, all of their appointments, and, uh, now, most recently, Mr. Donilon's. And, uh, just a closing point on Counsel Curran's suggestion about considering a stipend. I mean, given, given the scope of their responsibilities and the size of this budget, uh, I would be strongly in favor of, uh, the commission, uh, Mr. Schimmel and, and your budgetary organization giving serious thought and consideration to that. Um, we ask a lot of them, and I, I think a monetary stipend in this case is, uh, very much in order. But I, I intend to support Mr. Donilon's appointment tonight. Uh, Counsel Edwards, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Whitfield?
Thank you. Um, I agree. I echo what Counsel Fenton says, and, um, the right process doesn't negate how qualified you all are. It doesn't negate your commitment, but it still needs to be a fair and equitable process. It still needs to give opportunities to others. And so I just wanted to make sure that you don't think just because we're saying what we're saying that we don't think that you're qualified. We don't think that you're doing a good job. I'm all about, um, opportunities. I'm all about equity and access. And if other individuals don't get the access, we don't really know what can change and what can be brought to the table. And so even if it's me, even if it's anyone else, we need to start giving more people the opportunity to bring their skill set to the table. But that doesn't negate at all what you all have brought to the table, what you continue to bring to the table, and that's why I will support all three of you tonight. The process isn't about you personally at all. It's about the process. Thank you, uh, Mr. President.
Counsel Govan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I mean, um, Counsel Edwards. Um, I agree with, um, with, uh, what President Fenton said regarding the, um, the appointments. I'm really happy and proud that you all have volunteered your time all this time, all these years. Um, I think 30 years, I heard. That's, um, that's miraculous. Um, and I do also agree that we need to give people opportunities. Regarding the stipend, I think it's a great idea. Um, you know, as long as it doesn't come from our residents, I'm, I'm, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Counsel Allen? I'm sorry, Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado? Yes, Counsel Santanello?
Emphatically, yes.
Yes, Counsel Klick Bruce? Yes, Counsel Perez. Absent Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
The vote is sufficient. The appointment is confirmed. Congratulations, sir. Thank you, Counsel Edwards. Madam Clerk, next item. We're gonna give this a shot. I don't know if we're gonna accomplish it, but let's try to take items five through 15 together, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Item number five, EverSource Westford Circle. Item number six, EverSource Page Boulevard. Item seven, EverSource Commonwealth Avenue. Item eight, EverSource Sumner Avenue. Item nine, EverSource Memorial Drive. Item 10, EverSource Main Street. Item 11, EverSource South Branch Parkway. Item 12, EverSource Boston Road. Item 13, EverSource Gene Drive. Item 14, EverSource Brick Street, and item 15, EverSource Memorial Avenue.
Nice job. Thank you. Does anybody object to us hearing all of these, uh, as one package? Okay, seeing no objections. Uh, Counsel Brown, would you like to speak? Or you want Counsel, uh, Mr. Signoli to go first? Mr. Signoli, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Signoli, DPW Director for the City of Springfield. Uh, in front of you tonight, we have 11 petitions. The first five were tabled at the meeting of March 10th. Uh, I have representatives here from EverSource to talk specifically about a project if it is needed, and I would be happy to present them briefly at this point. Item number five, EverSource Gas Westford Circle from North Hampton Ave to Norfolk Street. Uh, they are proposing replacement of low pressure cast iron service to a higher pressure service that includes about 2,000 feet of new pipe, changing six-inch cast iron to four-inch plastic. Page Boulevard includes Page Boulevard, Tremont Street, Second, Paramount, and Carlo Street. Again, replacement of low-pressure service to higher pressure that includes a mix of size changes, but changing cast iron to plastic for about 3,700 feet. Uh, the first two items and all of these are for services for residential properties. Item number seven on Commonwealth Avenue is basically the exact same thing, replacement of low-pressure service, um, to a higher pressure service that includes about 3,300 feet of new pipe, changing cast iron to plastic. Sumner Avenue is a myriad of small projects, all associated with the ex-construction project, mostly due to encroachment of other utilities to the gas service. Uh, it includes new gas service as well to Forest Park, uh, to the information building as you enter Forest Park as well. Excuse me, and it's about 1,200 feet total. Uh, and that's the Sumner Avenue Project, uh, number nine, EverSource Electric Memorial Drive. This is electric. First four were gas. New three-phase primary line from a pole to a transformer adjacent to the Charter School located at the corner Memorial Drive and Roosevelt Avenue.
Come on up. Gotta introduce yourself, please.
Sorry, my name's Kevin Borneval. I'm, uh, the designer for the project Memorial Drive for Electric. Um, so we're looking to do two things, uh, the three-phase riser, um, as discussed, and we are also looking to make a backup tie, uh, for contingencies to backfeed, um, the businesses in the area.
Thank, thank you. Okay, Mr. Signoli, continue.
Yes. Item number 10, EverSource Gas Main Street in the north end. Again, replacing low-pressure to higher pressure on Main Street from Carew to Osgood and on Morgan Street. Again, eliminating cast iron with plastics. Uh, item 11, EverSource Electric, adding one new pole on South Branch Parkway. This is to accommodate the work that is being done at Veterans Golf Course to provide new electric service for the renovated facility at that, at that location. EverSource Gas on Boston Road is Boston Road from Harvey Street to Wilk Street. Again, replacement of low-pressure to higher pressure, upgrades for business and capacity improvements. Item number 13 on, uh, Gene Drive, replacing again low-pressure to higher pressure, a total of 5,300 feet on Cadwell, Curve, Ivan, Watling, Ronald Drive, Gene Drive, and Kenway Drive, and these are all upgrades for, uh, better service to the residents there. Item number 14, uh, I believe it says Brickett Street. I'm gonna say Davenport, replacing low-pressure to a higher pressure, 2,300 feet on Davenport and Brickett Street. And the last one, Murray Hill Ave, again, replacing low-pressure to a higher pressure, uh, 6,100 feet total for residents on Murray Hill, Franklin, Tracy, Genesee, and Leadyard Street. And again, these are all upgrades for residential properties in those areas. And as I mentioned, EverSource Electric has people here and EverSource Gas, so if you have a specific question on any one of the petitions, they would be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Signoli. Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as stated earlier, as far as, uh, in our subcommittee meeting, uh, we did go over a few things, uh, with EverSource. Uh, these actual projects, um, they're needed, um, so we do need them. Uh, they really will service the community. Uh, the thing is, as far as where the issues were, was being able to be more transparent and providing the information in a timely manner, um, so we can present it also to the public. Um, and a little cheat sheet, uh, I do see another, the individual, uh, who was here from EverSource, if he can briefly come and explain some of the information that, um, he said he's willing to send to us, and we can share it, uh, via Facebook also with the community.
Counsel Brown, sir, if you could introduce yourself, name an address, and tell us a little bit about the procedure, not necessarily the specific projects, but the procedure you're gonna follow going forward.
Yes, appreciate it. Thank you, council members. Um, my name's Keegan Ritchie. I represent EverSource Gas. I'm the Director of Construction for Western Massachusetts, responsible for all construction activities for EverSource. Um, the projects that Mr. Signoli mentioned, um, are for upgrades in the neighborhoods that he mentioned, but I just want to be clear that they're upgrades for what we call leak-prone pipe. So these are old aged infrastructure. He mentioned the word cast iron quite a bit. We have quite a bit of cast iron, bare steel pipe throughout our system, throughout the state of Massachusetts. These projects are to replace that leak-prone pipe that, from EverSource's risk perspective, has a leak history, is, um, unreliable, and that's the purpose for replacing the pipe. Um, speaking to, um, Council Member Brown's comment about better transparency, um, we discussed at length in our subcommittee meeting and his subcommittee meeting, a process about, you know, providing details around all the projects, the scopes, the affected addresses, the time that we'll be doing the project, the contractors that we'll be working with to replace that project. So I think we have a pretty good process detailed out on how we communicate that. Um, and I believe all of our work planned for this year have been provided by EverSource Community Relations to, um, Counsel Brown. to, um, Counselor Brown, um, for the duration of the year. And we'll continue to follow that process for years to come and for any other work we have. And I have many members from my team on the call today. So if there are any specific questions detailed about the specific projects that, uh, Mr. Signoli went over, I'd be happy to kick it to my team to kind of talk through that if there's any questions out there.
Appreciate that. Thank you all for being here. Counselor Brown.
And thank, thank you. And I have, um, and one more issue and concern. I know, Chris, this is kind of, uh, up, up, up your alley. Uh, we were discussing about doing an actual audit. Um, because as far as, um, you know, we wanna know, uh, some of the information. That was me, the whole, uh, reason, reasoning behind, uh, the meeting also. I know, uh, there are some issues when it comes to work being done, when it comes to the actual streetlights, work, future works being done. So I know that we had requested, um, as a body to do like an audit, either through the Attorney General or you said someone else, Chris?
Yep. And, uh, the discussion that we were having, the audit, and Counselor Brown mentioned it before, that I, my recommendation was to wait a little bit. Um, and the audit we're talking about is auditing the, uh, streetlights. And the reason why I requested that we, uh, wait a little while is EverSource is a little bit over eighty percent complete with the conversion of their, uh, LED light or, uh, conversion of their, uh, high-pressure sodium and other lights to LEDs in the city. And I would hate to do an audit right now that's gonna come up in probably, you know, forty, thirty percent of the data is gonna be wrong, uh, or out of date. So my recommendation would be to wait until they have that complete, which is probably gonna be later this year, uh, and then be able to do an audit on the streetlights at that point. And that was, uh, that was my recommendation, rather than going through it and then possibly having to then do it again once we did all the, uh, swap outs of the streetlights.
Thank you, Chris. And as, and, and, and once again, um, it was a good meeting. I, I do believe it's projects that we, we do need to go forward, uh, as far as the committee. I know we, we, we know that they, these are important. Uh, some of them are in my area. I know another issue we talked about as far as the repaving. It looks like there, you know, a lot of the areas, uh, we had new, 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 new pavement and new sidewalks. Um, with this intensive, uh, construction, how efficient are they gonna be? Are they gonna do a patch job? Or how, how are they gonna repair some of that stuff?
Well, I've been, over the last couple of months, uh, in following up work that was done in the fall, uh, we've held up some work from EverSource this spring until they fixed some of the things that they were supposed to do last fall. And so we've held back some of those permits, uh, in order to make sure that they get some of those areas taken care of. There was a couple bigger projects that they were working on that they did not get done. Uh, so we are holding back some permits until that work is complete.
Uh, thank you, Chris. I know, um, like I said, the, the real matter is, I know, um, it, it, I, I kind, I, I, I know as far as the committee is something we need to do. I know the only conflict that I had, and I know, uh, my other colleague, Counselor Davila, had is when we would actually, uh, do the audit. Uh, but thank you, Mr.
And the only other item I wanted to add as part of the meetings, uh, Counselor Davila was asking about, uh, information related to EverSource and streetlights that are out in the city. Um, information that was provided to me on Friday, um, shows that they have thirty-four lights that need to have lumineers, uh, changed out. And they have nineteen underground feeds, uh, that could not be fixed during the winter, and they're gonna be starting work soon on those. Those nineteen underground feeds, um, represent a number of lights, not just nineteen lights, but could represent anywhere between one and, uh, five or six, depending upon the location. So they're dealing with over eighty locations, uh, individual locations at this point that they're gonna be starting work on, um, in the next couple of weeks, especially for, uh, the underground work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Counselor Davila.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Chris, will you believe if I tell you that I was not expecting to ask you any questions?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Counselor.
Will you believe if I tell you that I was not expecting to ask you any questions?
I knew exactly what you were going to ask.
Yes, you did. But go ahead. That's why you just say what you just said, 'cause you know I was gonna ask. But listen, uh, did you say thirty-four? Say that again, thirty-four?
They have thirty-four lumineers that need to be switched out.
I am not the.
As a four-four, the basically lights that need to be fixed. And then they have nineteen underground locations that need to be addressed that, uh, probably amount to forty or fifty different lights in the city.
So Chris, I am not Victor the electrician. What does that mean, thirty-four?
Those are just locations that they have listed that they have to date. And I'm just looking at the dates here. Uh, none of them are older than thirty days. Those are just lights that need to be either bulbs replaced or heads need to be adjusted, um, that are, that is a light out that they know is above-ground issue. And then they have separately nineteen underground issues that they have to deal with. And as I mentioned, those underground issues are not just one light. They could be a series or a number of them.
And you mentioned eighty is, what is that, eighty?
It's, and their, their guess is about eighty total that they're dealing with right now in their system that need to be addressed as far as above-ground and below-ground work.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Chris. Uh, I'm gonna follow up with you. As I say, we need to, uh, look each other into the eyes. You and I have a chit-chat about this. Because I, as I said before, I'm not happy with the situation with the light poles. Uh, without being said, Mr. President, if you indulge me, sir, uh, who are the people who are representing EverSource Gas and Electric here today?
Well, there are, I, it's very difficult to identify them all. Do you want me to all have them introduce themselves?
I see one here is Keith, right? Is that Keith?
Keegan Ritchie.
Keegan Ritchie.
Nice to meet you. And who's the other gentleman?
Kevin Bornable from Electric.
I'm sorry, can you speak up?
Uh, Kevin Bornable from EverSource Electric.
And we have at least another six participants online.
From EverSource?
Would you like me to have them introduce themselves?
No, 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 no. That's too many. So I guess what I'm asking is, because, uh, we made a big to-do about this. I know, at least I did. Um, Jesus Christ, that's eight people. We usually get none. I wonder why you're all here. It's because we made a stink. Uh, so are you poor guys the ones that are stuck with us, uh, on a daily basis, on a weekly basis? Or are you guys the guys in charge of coming to us to explain things to us from now on? Or is this a one-time thing just to? What's the deal here? I'm just trying to ask.
From, from my, from my perspective, Counselor, they're gonna be here, uh, at every meeting. My goal would be that I would present them as we did tonight. These are more of subject matter experts related to particular projects.
Right, Chris, you'd be Keith and Keegan.
Yes. Or, or whoever else happens to be involved in a particular project. It could be, depending on a project, it might be somebody else. But.
Yeah, EverSource Gas will have representation at these meetings moving forward, sir.
Uh, yes, and that, that was exactly what I was getting at, Keith, because, uh, listen, I am not an electrician. But anybody, everybody here knows that if I don't understand something, I'm gonna vote against it. Simple as that. We have an obligation. And believe me, I just paid my EverSource bill. I can de-hurt you a lot. And so we have a lot of people out there who are asking questions. And honestly, and first of all, before I say anything, I wanna thank you, thanks both of you for being here. And I do look forward to establishing a, a working relationship with you guys to, 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 to explain to us what the heck is going on, because I think we're completely in the dark. I did say, and I will say to you gentlemen, there's nobody here from EverSource. I will vote against whatever project it is, 'cause I think it's completely disrespectful to this body and most importantly, disrespectful to the residents that we took an oath to serve. Uh, I thank you guys for being here. I look forward to developing a working relationship with you guys. And if I could ask you, please, before you leave, can you leave your contact information with the staff in the office so that we can get a hold of you? Because a lot of times we talk to people, people disappear. I don't know who, who they were, it's like a ghost. So I appreciate if you could leave your contact information with the staff so that, um, so that we can follow up with you guys. Um, and without being said, thank you guys for being here. Keith, Keegan, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Anyone else on the utility petitions? Counselor Allen? You gotta put your mic on.
I thought we had a lot of time to get to the NCAA game, but, um, we're starting to run out of time.
Is it over?
A tip-off's around nine-twenty. No, I would like to call the question.
Okay, Counselor Allen's made a motion to call the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion is made by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Curran. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to call the question. Nine votes are required.
Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santinello.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
No.
No, Counselor Perez, absent Counsel Fenton.
Yes, more insufficient. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of items numbered five through fifteen, please.
Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton. Uh, pardon me, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez, absent Counsel Fenton.
Yes, more sufficient. Petitions are approved. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, please take items number sixteen through eighteen to, oh, uh, item sixteen is. Counselor Allen? You may. Gotta put your microphone on, please.
Can't hear, oh, thank you.
Sorry, I had my mic on. I'm making a motion to, uh, take item twenty-two out of order so we can get Mr. Mahoney and Ms. Colton Harris, um, out of here if we all vote for it.
Is there a motion to take item number twenty-two? Is there any, is there any objection?
No.
What was that, Counsel Govan?
I second that motion.
Okay, so if there's no objection, we don't need to vote on the motion. We'll just go right to calling item number twenty-two, Madam Clerk.
Item number twenty-two, collective bargaining agreement ratification, Springfield Public Health Nurses.
Okay, Attorney Mahoney, be quick, please.
Good evening, councilors. I'm just, uh, this'll follow up. I was in front of you on March tenth on this, uh, contract. This is a, um, three, a four-year contract, one year followed by three years. One dollar an hour in the first year. Two percent, two percent, two percent for the next three years. Uh, we have a, we expanded the time to file agreements from five days to ten days. We added the military leave ordinance. We've got some flexibility to use outside agencies and part-time, non-bargaining nurses if we, if the commissioner needs them. Um, at the time, we had one employee while we were negotiating this contract. She has since, uh, left our employment. Uh, but she ratified it before she went, so we have to bring the contract back. We met with the, um, uh, Public Health Committee on April first and briefed them on this contract and answered their questions.
Okay, any comments or questions from the council regarding the CBA? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown. Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez, absent Counsel Fenton.
Yes, more insufficient. CBA is approved. Okay, now, now items sixteen and seventeen together, Madam Clerk. These grants are below our threshold.
Item number sixteen, donation of goods of elder fare, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five thousand twenty cents. Item number seventeen, National Environmental Health Association grant, eight thousand five hundred. Item number eighteen, bills of prior.
Oh, just sixteen and seventeen. We can't do eighteen.
Sorry.
Yeah. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on these two items.
Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Govan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez, absent Counsel Fenton.
Yes, more insufficient. Grants are approved. Item number eighteen, Madam Clerk.
Bills of prior year, Police Department, ten thousand eight hundred and six thousand eighty cents.
Ms. Quono?
Good evening, councilors. This are two bills from the Police Department. They are prior-year bills, and they need, we need the council's approval to use current-year funds to pay these bills. Every so often, bills fall through the cracks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Quono, any questions from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Givon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez? Absent Counselor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, bills are approved. Item number nineteen?
I have an order authorizing expenditure of FY twenty-five, State of Massachusetts Fair Share Amount Amendment, funds eight hundred and seven thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-one cents.
Mr. Signoli?
Good evening, councilors. Chris Signoli, DPW Director.
Microphone, please.
Good evening, councilors. Chris Signoli, DPW Director. The funds that we have been appropriated by the State of Massachusetts as part of the Fair Share Amendment, otherwise known as the Millionaire's Tax. This is the second time we've received funds. This item was forty-five million dollars statewide, and based upon the formula that was put in place, it's eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. It is put into our Chapter Ninety account.
Thank you, Mr. Signoli. Any questions for the DPW Director? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Givon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Can we just slow it down a bit? Because I did have a question, but I'm gonna say yes.
Okay. Just want to put your hand up in the queue. We'll call you.
Yes.
I did try, but it was so fast.
You were late.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
I wasn't late. It was fast.
You were late, and it was fast, yes. Madam Clerk, proceed.
Yes, Counselor Delgado? Yes, Counselor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez? Absent Counselor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient. Order is authorized. Item number twenty, Madam Clerk.
I have here an order authorizing expenditure of FY twenty-six, Chapter Ninety Fund, five million thirty-five thousand four hundred and five dollars and eighty cents.
Mr. Signoli?
Good evening, councilors. Chris Signoli, DPW Director. The State of Massachusetts historically has been providing two-hundred million dollars statewide for the Chapter Ninety program. The city of Springfield was usually receiving about three-point-six million. This year, the Governor and Legislature have elected to increase that amount to three-hundred million statewide using two different calculation methods. So instead of three-point-six million, the city of Springfield is going to be receiving three-point-zero-five million dollars this year as part of our Chapter Ninety program. As part of the packet, I believe it's all been fixed, so everybody should have it in front of them. We have included the letter from the Governor's Office, the grant setup, and as well as our paving list for this year with the Fair Share Funds and with the increase of Chapter Ninety. We will be... We're going out to bid within the next week or so for approximately five-point-one million dollars' worth of paving in the city. That gets us about twenty-five streets throughout the city. We are doing four arterial streets and twenty-one residential streets. Our paving program from last year has restarted a week or so ago, and as soon as this work is ready to go in probably late May, early June, we will get going with this work as quickly as possible as well.
Thank you, Mr. Signoli. Questions from the council? Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you. Chris, I just wanted to... Well, what I was gonna ask before was, is the fair share included in the paving? But you answered that just now. But like, is there a complete list, not just a list of what you all are paving now, that we can see? Something that we can like cross-reference for next year?
Yes, councilors. What we do every year in the beginning of the year in January is we put together a list of between twenty and twenty-five million dollars of paving, and we send that out to utility companies for their review to tell us what to stay away from or where they're gonna be having major projects. So that's kind of the three, four-year, five-year list that we have. So I'm happy to share that with everybody. I can send that tomorrow morning to all the councilors.
Thank you. And not only that, because I feel like I keep hearing Counselor Walsh ask about Magnolia and is not making the list, so I would just like to see it, to see where they're at, so we can make sure that some of these requests get through in following years. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Any other councilors? Counselor Curran?
Just a quick question, Chris. On the Fair Share Amendment, is that simply to... Is that just dedicated to paving or could you use it for other kind of projects?
It's any... It's anything that is usable within Chapter Ninety. So paving projects, if we needed to buy equipment, I can't use it for sidewalks. I can't use it on private ways, and I can use it for design. But with the past three or four years, we've done some major paving projects with regard to bonding. This year, we weren't getting the bonding, and rather than having an extremely small paving program this year, I wanted to use that money, and hopefully, we will be getting it every year. So that's what the plan is.
And not to go too far off track, is there any update? Or perhaps you could use the Fair Share Amendment for the project going over the North End Bridge? When you're... Not the North End Bridge itself, but simply the upkeep? I mean, that was a newspaper article. There was a resident who has been writing about it, several residents. I know the North End Citizens Council is very adamant about it. But just to get it simply... To get it simply painted? I mean, is there anything? And I know it's difficult. It's state-owned. It's not city-owned, and it's not at the top of the priority of District One, Mass DOT. I know that. But like, what progress can we make? What can we, as a council or a city, do to kind of make our voice heard on that one?
Yep. The North End Bridge itself is being replaced. And that work is gonna be a design-build project, which is probably going to be starting sometime in mid-2027, and the bridge is gonna be completely replaced.
But I'm referring just simply to maintenance when you get to the bridge, not the bridge, just the paint.
Which is partially depending upon where you are. It's either West Street or Plainfield Street. We have a project that we've been awarded funds through the EPA... There was a bigger EPA grant that was given twenty-something million dollars citywide, where all of that section of Plainfield and that section of West Street in front of Pride and the apartments on the other side is gonna be redone as well. And we're gonna be finishing that design and probably getting it out to bid sometime late this year.
Would that include the part that goes over the highway? That's the part I'm talking about.
The bridge itself, no. But we're gonna work with Mass DOT to get that... The bridge itself repaved at the same time we're doing ours.
Is there any way to just get it painted? I mean, when you're going over...
That's it. And that was one of the items we met with District Two on with regard to the pavement condition on Ninety-One. Underneath that section is in very bad condition, and as well as the bridge itself. So they're gonna be looking at the bridge painting there, because that has been a complaint for the past couple of years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor Curran. Any other councilors?
I do have my hand raised. Counselor Fenton?
Okay, Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know this is gonna sound like a broken record, because I ask it all the time, but what is the recourse for residents whose streets are not included in the paving program? Because my neighbors, every time this list comes out... Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, for mentioning Magnolia Terrace. They want to know why their street's not getting paved.
The information, as far as I'm concerned...
Should I have all of them call you?
I'm sorry, counselor.
I said, should I have all of them call you directly?
They do anyways. What we do is we base our selection of our paving list basically on pavement condition index. Every street in the city has paving condition index. We are going to be updating it again this year. Actually, PVPC is doing it for us this summer. So when we have that list, we go through the list, and as I said, we do a long list. We then take out streets. I then have to try and make sure that I make thirteen people sitting in this room as comfortable as possible to spread the work around all of the neighborhoods as best as we can, and, you know, try and somewhat stay away from big projects. For example, you know, the X, I don't want to be... Start doing side streets around the X while the X is being done and other areas as well. So I can share that list with... As I said before, I'm happy to share it with the councilors. I can give even a longer list that has all of the rankings for all of the streets. And one of the comments that I always ask residents is, if your particular street is not in good shape, I always ask you to go take a look at the streets that are on the list, because a lot of people, you know, myself, I don't see all the streets in the city, but when you go out and see one, you realize, you know, in Indian Orchard or parts of... Sections of Forest Park, you realize how bad a street particularly is in comparison to another street. I would love to be doing about ten million, eleven million dollars' worth of work. We just do not have the funds for it.
Well, I think we're far enough away from the X that we wouldn't really interfere in that project. So I think, in the essence of time, we'll continue this discussion later.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, that's five million thirty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Is that a... Is that a higher amount than usual? That seems a little high to me.
Yeah, it's higher than usual. They've increased the... Instead of two-hundred million statewide, they went to three-hundred million. They used a different type of calculation for the additional hundred million. So we're getting about, you know, forty percent, forty-five percent more funds than we've gotten in the past.
That's great news.
Yes.
That's great news. Do you foresee this being the same for the next fiscal year?
The way that the bill was put together at the state level is that it's a five-year bond bill. So being passed that this year, we will be looking at the same number at a minimum for the next five... For the next four years after this year.
Well, so we can count with roughly over five million dollars every...
Correct, yes.
For the next... You said four years?
Yeah. This would be the first year it's gonna be a five-year bill, so more...
And I think you're saying this at committee meeting, Chris, is gonna give us a little to do twenty-six streets?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yep.
Chris, you know how it is when there's fresh meat on the table. You know what happens, right?
Slightly aware.
So, Chris, I was made aware that if you could write this down on your list, there's some potholes on Forest Park and Pine... Forest Park, Gaverty, and Piney Woods. They did go out. They did fix, or they paved over some of the potholes. But I watched all this, all the potholes that were left out. I have not seen them. Appreciate if you could send a team out there to take a look at it. Also, and so I'm gonna start sounding like a broken record myself, like Counselor Walsh just said, we need to look at the top of Fergley on some of their avenue. That's pretty rough. And I know there's all the streets that you say that are in tough condition, but I just, you know, we can put that in the wish list, and I'm gonna... We need to do something with that street. It's absolutely awful. With that being said, I am glad, Chris, that you're getting this money. I am sure the diligence is being done, and let us not forget that a good city has good roads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Any other councilors? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on item number twenty.
Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Givon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez? Absent Counselor Fenton?
Yes, more than sufficient. Order is approved. Item number twenty-one, Madam Clerk.
I have here an order authorizing transfer of the care, custody, and management and control of South Side Marble Street.
Ms. Laura Walsh?
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for hearing this today. I'm Laura Walsh, Senior Parks Project Manager for the Park Department. The item before you is to officially transfer a portion of Emerson Wright Park that is already being maintained by the Park Department, but we just need to officially transfer it with the language and deed updates. This parcel was given to the city in 2008 as a tax title parcel. And then in 2011, when we started the renovations of Emerson Wright Park, these parcels were transferred to the Park Department, but this one seems to have been left out at that time. So we're just kind of closing the loop on this and making sure that this parcel is indeed part of the Park Department. It's currently a part of the splash pad area at the newly renovated Emerson Wright Park. So hopefully, it is supported tonight.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions regarding this transfer to the Parks Department? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Givon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez? Absent Counselor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient. Transfer is approved. Okay. Item number twenty-three, Madam Clerk.
I have here an order amended Chapter Two Seventy of the Revised Ordinance of the City of Springfield, nineteen-eighty-six, amended by Chapter Two Seventy, Section Two Seventy-one.
Okay, councilors. This is the amendment to the Pawn Shop and Pawn Brokers and Junk Dealers Ordinance that we approved first step on at the last meeting. I am the sponsor of it at the Law Department's request. So it did pass first step at the last meeting. It's on tonight for second and final step. If councilors would like to debate it, I'm happy to come down and speak on the subject. Otherwise, we can go to the second and final step. Any councilors with questions or comments on this proposal? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Second and final step.
Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Givon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Excuse me. Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez? Absent Counselor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient. Ordinance is ordained. Okay. Madam Clerk, item number twenty-four, please.
I have here an order amended to Chapter Three Twenty-seven-five-E, Solid Waste Containers.
Chris, before you talk about this, could you tell us just first about how twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six are different? Are they...
It's... There are kinds of three different... There are three different items that we changed within the ordinance as part of this. And when they were put in, Attorney Shuchuk put them in as three different items.
But they're all changing the same...
They're all changing the exact same ordinance, yes. And I'm happy to go through each one of them, yeah.
So... Yeah, I think you gotta go through... I think we gotta do them separately, unfortunately.
No, that's fine.
Why don't you start with number twenty-four, please?
Right. Item number twenty-four is basically one item within the... Just to go backwards, I was in front of you last fall, and I believe it was approved in December. Modification of our solid waste ordinance. One of the items that we put in there were fines. And item twenty-four changes the amount of fine. All the fines were two-hundred and fifty dollars. This one is basically the location of containers, where they are placed on your parcel. And I believe this came up, because I believe police ordinance issued a number of fines at two-hundred and fifty dollars. So with a little bit of outcry, the request was changed that fine for the placement of the containers from two-hundred and fifty to fifty dollars.
That's covered by item twenty-three, and that's all item twenty-three does. Excuse me, item twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yes.
Okay. Any questions from the council on that aspect of this ordinance amendment? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, why don't we call the roll? This is for first step.
Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Givon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila? Absent Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanella?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, first step is approved. Item number twenty-five.
Item number twenty-five.
We have to have the clerk call it first, Mr. Signoli.
Item number twenty-five, an amendment to Chapter three twenty-seven, solid waste.
Thank you, Mr. Signoli.
Thank you. With item twenty-five, there are really two items that we modified. Number one is we added accessory.
I think he's muted.
Thank you, councilors. Item number twenty-five are two items that were modified within the regulations. Item number one is accessory dwelling units. Obviously, we've had a lot of discussion about accessory dwelling units, so as part of the solid waste ordinances, we're making the recommendation that if an accessory dwelling unit is placed on a parcel, it has to get its own separate trash service versus like we do on a two-family home. The other item that was put in that is also tied to item twenty-six is a modification of the appeals and hearing process for somebody who has a trash service that is taken away. We modified it, or I shouldn't say we modified it, we clarified it a little bit, but with regard to open meeting laws, et cetera, we wanted to make sure the language was, was done better, and it appears in both documents, not to get ahead of myself on number twenty-six, but in the trash rules, trash fee rules and regulations, as well as the ordinance, that it had consistent language in there on how an appeals process will be handled with the city.
Thank you, Mr. Signoli. Any questions from the council regarding these changes? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on first step.
Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Givon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanella?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, first step is approved. If I can grab the gavel. Okay, next item, Madam Clerk, item number twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six, an amendment to the City of Springfield Trash Rules and Regulations.
Mr. Signoli, microphone, please. Thank you.
The trash rules and regulations are not an ordinance document, they were put together back when the trash fee was initiated, and inside that document, as I mentioned before, is just a modification of the appeals process and the hearing process that will be followed, and again, we just wanted to make sure they were consistent between the two documents.
Okay, thank you, so this is not an ordinance change?
This is not an ordinance change, this document is not an ordinance, but it is tied to the ordinance, so anytime I make a change to that document, I do want to make sure that the council sees it.
Understood. Okay, questions or comments from the council? Counselor Givon?
Just one comment or question, I get the question a lot regarding the trash fee, and I'm just wanting to bring that up because my constituents bring it up to me every time, so I'm not sure if there's going to be any conversation, I imagine not this year, or next year, or the next four years, but maybe at some point we could have a conversation regarding the trash fee being eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Givon.
The item on the trash fee will definitely be discussed during budget process.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on approval of item twenty-six. This is only one vote, and then this will be approved. The other two items, twenty-four and twenty-five, will appear on our next agenda for final passage, but this vote is final. Number twenty-six.
Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Givon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanella?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, order is approved. Thank you, Madam Clerk, item number twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven, a resolution increased of cost of gas and electricity.
Counselor Click Bruce?
Thank you, Council President. Before I begin with this resolution, I really, I had a question that I didn't get it, or statement to ask, that I didn't get to ask regarding the ever-source, it was called the question, so...
Chris, would you mind sticking around for one second? I think we got a question for you.
No, it's not, it's not for him, it was really, sorry, it's more or less of a statement, but regarding it.
You can go, good night, no, no, no extra stipend.
Yeah, regarding ever-source. Really, you know, we had a meeting regarding the streetlights, you know, back in August of last year, and it was one of the concerns that I had in the city regarding public safety, and I really, you know, it takes a lot for me to, to get annoyed or frustrated, but it's really, it was no, no follow-up or end or follow-through with, with ever-source, so few concerns that I had personally. And then, secondly, we recently sent out an email to my colleagues regarding some streetlight issues, I guess one was by a school, by SciTech on State Street, and another one was in their district in North Shore, and the response that we received just wasn't suitable for me being addressed. This is an issue, ongoing issue in our city, and it's a public safety issue. I ride through our city at night, like when I get ready to go home, probably gonna count fifteen to thirty streetlights that are gonna be out, and then here we are, you know, taxing our residents with, with these, with these bills. So, just gonna make a statement, Richard Allen, who brought this up months ago, and I sat on it for a little while because I wanted to give ever-source a chance, so I'm gonna put this on the record, not to bill the city for lights that are out past three business days. I'm gonna look to propose this moving forward, because if we have streetlights out that have been out for eight months, and three months, and probably fifteen years, whatever the case may be, why are we still getting billed for that? So, we have to, as a, as a, as a body, really put the pressure back on ever-source to, to do better, and to come back to us with, with what they're doing, because if you're doing it, it will come back and report it to us. Why do we have to always ask for the information? So, so again, it took, takes a lot for me to get here, but I'm here now, and I will follow up with, with ever-source with some questions and some demands moving forward from, from a public safety standpoint. So, I wanted to make that statement, but the question was called before I can get that. So, to, to the resolution sponsored by myself and Counselor Whitfield and Counselor Brown, this is an increase of cost of gas electricity, whereas Springfield residents have recently experienced significant increases in the cost of gas and electricity delivered by ever-source, which have placed a financial strain on individuals and families in our community, and whereas these rising utility costs have become a pressing concern for, for the well-being of, well-being and economic stability of residents, many of whom already face financial challenges due to inflation and the ongoing economic impacts of COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas the city council, the City of Springfield is committed to ensuring the financial health and quality of life for all its residents, and it is essential that action be taken to address these rising costs, which are placing undue burdening on households throughout the Commonwealth. And whereas the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, DPU, holds oversight and regulatory authority of ever-source, over ever-source, the utility provider that supplies gas and electricity to residents in Springfield, and whereas the Massachusetts State Legislature is empowered to enact laws and policies that can help protect consumers from excessive and unjustified utility rate increases. And whereas the City of Springfield respectfully requests an investigation into the factors contributing to the recent surge in gas and electricity costs, and whether these increases are justified or represent potential issues with utility practices or market inefficiencies, and now therefore be resolved that the Springfield City Council call upon the Massachusetts State Legislature and the Department of Public Utilities to initiate a comprehensive investigation into the recent increases in gas and electricity rates that are significantly impacting the residents here in the City of Springfield. Be it further resolved that the investigation should assess the fairness of these increases, the causes of the escalation, and the potential for legislative and regulatory actions to mitigate the financial impacts on our residents who are struggling. Be it fairly resolved that the Springfield City Council urges the legislation and the Department of Public Utilities to consider the possibility of providing more relief, and I think it was like fifty dollars that they, that they provided, and rate adjustments for Springfield residents facing financial hardships due to, due to these increased utility costs. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Governor of Massachusetts, the Massachusetts State Legislature, and I'll be sending it to via Bud Williams on behalf of, of my colleague, Counsel Brown, to get this out to them, and the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities for their immediate review and consideration. So, Council President, I, I rest there because resolution is what it is, I think all of our residents deserve and should get some relief. We are getting taxed tremendously, and these times are uncertain, so I urge my colleagues to support this and put some pressure on Boston, I'm willing to travel to Boston to advocate for this, because our, our residents deserve more relief at, at these troubling times. And it, and it ties into what our rate increases, and it ties back into my first statement, what our streetlights. The least we can do is get streetlights allocated and fix when we request them from the City Council. Just imagine what our colleagues have to, what our residents have to go through when they have to call three-one-one and go through that whole process. We, as being city councilors, pretty much got told, well, we need a, a better location. We gave you the location, gave you the location, but nothing was done, no follow-up or nothing. So, yes, I am annoyed, and I will look to, to put some pressure on ever-source. Thank you, I rest my case.
Thank you, Counselor Click Bruce. Any other councilors? Counselor Edwards?
May it be added as a sponsor as well, please.
Okay, Counselor Edwards would like to be added as a sponsor? Is there anyone who would like not to be added as a sponsor? Okay. Any other councilors? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm glad to join as a co-sponsored Counselor Click. I just wanna follow up and say that we got into the streetlights, this is something that they're not doing as a favor. We pay for it. We pay three, I believe it's three point two five million dollars a year on the contract. And I bring that up because that also puts a burden to the, to the taxpayer, because not only the rates are ridiculously high, and there's something more the state has to work on, but it's another burden, financial burden to the citizens, and they do deserve, not only from a public safety standpoint, like Counselor Click just said, but also they pay for it. We need to have light out there. Summer hasn't, hasn't fully started yet, and we already had several intensive shootings in the city. This is a problem. Counselor Click, my compliments to you, my good sir for putting this forward, please count me as, as an ally on this, and it is obvious that in this wise and humble body, there's a real appetite for holding ever-source accountable. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I really, when my, me and my colleague discussed some of this, I think a lot of people don't truly understand how poor lighting truly will bring more crime. There's a lot of times, I know in our area, we, we talked after the meeting, and I know that ever-source has, and someone suggested that we could possibly use police officials, so I would maybe like to stress some of that, where now when they're doing their regular patrol routes, when they notice a streetlight that's out in the dark, I had suggested DPW and things like that, they don't work, you know, at nighttime, so we, you know, they had suggested maybe using the police officers in their daily routes, if they see a light that's not on, to actually report it, because ever-source, they don't have trucks or people who actually go out throughout the city to check if these lights are out. So, I explained to them that unfortunately, there's more lights out than people are reporting. And, like I said, I know an audit is, is necessary, because we are paying for this stuff, and hopefully, like I said, I, with, with all my colleagues, it's just now trying to see when we can actually do it. I know Counselor Davila wanted to do it yesterday, so I commend my colleague, Counselor LeVar Click Bruce, I know he's doing his due diligence as far as keeping the city safe, and I commend him for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank my colleague, Counselor Click Bruce, for putting this resolution forward, I wholeheartedly support it. I also wanted to say I wish that ever-source was on to hear what you had to say, I wish the question wasn't moved so quickly. I, I know that you had raised your hand prior to the question being moved, and had not spoke on it before, and I just wish that they had the opportunity to hear your anger and frustration, because it is merit to what you were saying. The question that I wanted to ask you is about the three days, if they change, through the, through the President, to Counselor Click Bruce, if they change, don't change the lights, in three days, they charge us? I mean, I didn't get that part.
So...
Counselor Click Bruce?
Counsel, Counsel President, Counsel, Madam Vice President, so what, what I'm going to look to propose is if three lights, if the lights are not replaced, and say we report a light being out, and it's, it hasn't been replaced in, you know, three business days, that we shouldn't be charged for that, the city.
So, we're charged for it if it's... Okay, so we're charged for it regardless, but you're saying if it takes them longer than three business days, they need to eat that cost?
Absolutely. All these lights, as it stands right now, my understanding is, if lights are out right now, we're getting charged for it, which shouldn't be in my opinion.
Gotcha, gotcha, I was just trying to understand what you were saying, and I, I guess I will support that, just need to understand like what their personnel is like, like if they have even staff to be able to do that, maybe ten days, I don't know, but I'm willing to at least listen to it, but really, really wish they would have heard.
I mean, we can get into the, you know, three, seven, ten days, but my, my point in all this is, we, we're having, we having lights out, and it's a public safety issue, and again, it brings on crime, so we have to come up with something, and we are getting charged as a city that our lights are not even working.
Yeah.
So, we have to do something, in my opinion.
It's definitely a public safety issue, and the fact that our residents complain about it over and over and over again, I think I was at a subcommittee meeting that Counselor Davila hosted, and, or Counselor Walsh, I can't remember who it was, I know they both were there, but the Forest Park residents were, were like very upset, like they've been, like complaining about these issues, given the light numbers, doing what they were supposed to do, and still nothing is happening, and it's just unacceptable, so, yeah, let's have that discussion and, and see what we can get negotiated, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Givon?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Click Bruce, for bringing this resolution forward. I remember before I came onto the City Council, it was ten years ago possibly, I remember driving through the city, and the streetlights were dark, and when it starts to get dark in October, November, at four o'clock it got dark, so the kids walking home from school were in these dark streets, and I would call the councils, I'd call my Counselor Orlando Ramos, I'd call Counsel Jesse Letterman, and tell them, what's going on with these streetlights, why are they off? And ten years later, we're still having this conversation, so I'm really glad that we're going to do something about this. I've talked about, are we paying for the streetlights that are off for the longest time? So, it's time that we do something, we hold ever-source accountable. Our residents should not have to risk their lives to go out, look at a street poll number, and report it to ever-source. They have the staff, they can have a staff person out there at night, running through the streets, they can do that if they wanted to, they make enough money for it, so I think it's time for us to do something, and this is a good start. So, thank you, I will certainly be supporting, and will be, hope to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Givon. Counselor Santanella?
Yeah, I just want to say that last night, I took a ride down Parker Street from my house to the center of sixteen acres, and there were nine streetlights out, nine, and it's so dangerous when those things go out, because a pedestrian walking across the street's gonna get hit by a car. So, I want to, you know, just say that LeVar has done a tremendous job on this, I want to be, my name added to it, and we have to do something, and we have to do something fast.
Thank you, Counselor Santanella. Any other, Counselor Delgado?
First of all, thank you to, to my colleague, Counselor Click Bruce, for putting this up. I guess I had just a quick question, it was along the same lines as, as Counsel Whitfield on the being charged piece, so I know for us, you know, the residential, we get the, you know, we talked a lot about the supply and the delivery rates that people are getting, so is it, my understanding, I'm assuming we get the same type of charges when, with the lights?
So, Counselor, through the Council President, yeah, so we have to get more clarification on that, so I don't have all the particulars, but my understanding, again, I'll say it again, my understanding is, we have to get ever-source to a meeting, that we are being, we, meaning the city, is being charged, and I'm pretty sure it probably goes to our residents, I don't know, these are questions I, I plan on asking, that if a light, if lights are out, we're still on the hook to be paying for that, why are we paying for lights that are not working? It's a simple question for, for me, so.
So, through the chair, so, yeah, I, I plan to support this, and also ask it to be added on as a co-sponsor, so thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you, Counselor Delgado. Any other councilors regarding the resolution? Okay, Madam Clerk, please add all, all councilors as co-sponsors to this. Okay, seeing no further questions or comments, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Givon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanella?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez, absent Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, ordinance, resolution is approved. Any more business, Madam Clerk?
There are no more business for tonight.
Okay, councilors, council will stand adjourned until our hearings meeting scheduled for April twenty-eighth. Thank you, that will conclude our meeting this evening, good night.
Good night.